Thank you.
Waiting to go live.
Okay, let me know.
On YouTube?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday.
Good evening. If you would like to speak during public comment, click the Participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the Raise Hand option. You will notice a blue hand icon appear in the upper corner of your screen, where your face, name, number appears. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you are unmuted for public comment. Once recognized and unmuted, please state your name and address. You will have up to three minutes to comment. Luke Mihop, you are unmuted and recognized for comment.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mia Mahopolis, and I live at 3 Mansfield Place. Two of my children attend Royal School. Before I begin, a big thank you to the Board Administration and all of our Darien school staff for continuing to do such an incredible job during these continuously stressful times. I offer comment this evening to share Royal's experiences with portable classrooms and to encourage the Administration and the Board to act expeditiously to remodel and/or expand older schools and eliminate portables. Learning in a portable is subpar at best. Inside, the trailers are cold. The kids must walk from the trailers outside and into the main building to use the restrooms. There are no security measures as a security guard at Royal is located at the front of the building behind locked doors. And on top of these concerns, the Internet access can be spotty, which is especially difficult for a classroom of children accessing online content. We respectfully remind the Board that while portables were intended to be a short-term solution to a spacing problem, they have been used for supplemental programming such as IDEA and Orchestra. And at Royal, they currently service classrooms for two full-time 5th grade sections. I appreciate this opportunity to comment on behalf of Royal, and we support the Administration's and Board's evolving conversation about expanding and reimagining school space to better serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahopolis. Jonathan Dunn, you are unmuted and recognized.
Good evening. My name is John Dunn. I live at 175 Raymond Street. I wanted to begin by commending Superintendent Adley for finally moving away from a one-size-fits-all COVID strategy to one that better suits the varying needs of Darien students by keeping our elementary schools fully and safely open. It is my most sincere hope that we will continue to do so in the coming months, and it is most beneficial to our children. As we witnessed during the September hybrid period, it is extremely clear that remote learning does not work for our youngest learners. I have a kindergarten at Tokaneep. Her at-home learning in September was challenging and largely unproductive. She has thrived with full-on-person learning. Five-year-olds are unable to sit at a computer for hours each day. Additionally, these young students require the full assistance of a parent or caregiver to successfully navigate their home at-home learning. This is not a feasible educational model. It is important to note that despite rising COVID cases in Connecticut, we can continue to best serve the needs of our students and children by keeping them safely in school. The head of the CDC has publicly stated that schools are among the safest places for kids K-12 can be for students contracting illness from family gatherings and local events rather than in the classroom. Discussion at the last BOE meeting mirrored this. Darien schools have not been major drivers of transmission for cases in town. Despite the science being crystal clear for schools to safely remain open, we are now seeing Connecticut's teachers' unions pushing for a return to full remote learning after Thanksgiving. It is beyond misguided to disregard science and push for an educational model that will only further disadvantage students. I'll close my comments by asking all of us to think back to the September 22nd BOE meeting and all of the unfounded claims made by representatives of the DEA to halt the return to full-on-person schooling. We were told students would be breathing down each other's necks. We were told that many students would not be able to sit six feet apart and eat unmasked. We were threatened that teachers would leave for other districts if a full return commenced. They all turned out to be baseless. Our schools aren't driving COVID transmissions. Darien students missed enough school during the last academic year. We must follow the science, disregard the unsubstantiated, fear-driven agenda of the teachers' unions, and do what is best for our children's academic and emotional development, keeping them safely in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Stacy T A, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, it's Stacy T A, 10 Clarks Lane. Duke, I just wanted to let you know that no one heard anything that you said until Mr. Tramberg introduced the public comment, because the BOE booth was muted. Thank you.
Thank you. Jocelyn Delancy, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hello, Jocelyn Delancy, 110 Commons Park North, Stamford, Connecticut. Oh, okay. In the spirit of Thanksgiving week, I'd first like to say that we are truly fortunate to be in Darien. We have amazing families, superior educators, and an abundance of resources unlike other towns in our area. We are also fortunate for our superintendent and Board of Ed. While there are many times we don't see eye to eye, maybe even tonight, I know we always work well together and have the best interests of our students at heart. I also want to thank the CDSP and all of the families who showered the schools and staff with posters, cards, flowers, and other thank yous. It was a special and much-needed showing of support. That being said, let's talk numbers. Between Monday 11/16 and Monday 11/23, Darien had 67 documented cases of COVID. Today, just today, there were 25 teachers, now counting other staff or typical absences, out on a forced quarantine. Twenty-five. That's 25 subs needed, 5% of our teaching population. Hundreds of students typically learning impacted. Of those 25, 15 were at the elementary level. Teachers are wondering if there are more active cases and quarantines at the element if there are more active cases at the elementary level, why are the secondary schools hybrid and elementary all-in? Teachers are scared, stressed, and making many personal sacrifices to make sure your children are learning successfully. We have had teachers leave for other districts, and students are still sitting three feet apart. We need help from the town and a shift in our thought process. Spread isn't school. Three more cases today. On my Saturday morning drive to Starbucks, I saw a group of seven Darien students all unmasked. When asked where students are going for this short holiday break, we hear states that require quarantine and locations that require a passport. Teachers loved the showing of support from families last week and know so many who are safe and work to keep us safe. But to truly feel safe and appreciated, knowing that we matter and you really value that in-person learning, we need to see changes. We need safe practices at social gatherings. Parties should be postponed for safer times, and families need to honestly keep kids out of school to properly quarantine, or if you are sick. This opinion will get black from the Board, Super and maybe some parents and also some teachers, but my honest opinion is that Darien should be remote from after Thanksgiving through the holidays. Our numbers are there. The spread isn't stopping. If we went remote, it would be hard on some families and teachers and students, but here is what it would do. It would guarantee safety, get spread out of schools, allow for everyone to teach and learn on an even playing field, save the district money on subs, and it would let educators know you care about our well-being. If not remote, at least possibly moving the elementary schools to hybrid. Revised, please, because I think no one was happy with it at our initial go. We, I thank you for your consideration, and please know I love my class, and teaching in person is best and easiest for me. But we need to keep our schools healthy and safe. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mrs. Delancy. Joanna Walsh, you are unmuted and recognized.
Good evening. My name is Joanna Walsh, and I live at 17 Pleasant Street. I have three children in the Darien Public School System at Hinley and Middlesex, and I am co-president of the Hinley PTO this year. I am speaking today because I'm worried about the facilities project. I know a discussion of the feasibility study for removal of portables at elementary schools and libraries reimagined is on tonight's agenda, but I watched the committee meeting on November 12th. While I am very appreciative that everyone agrees that the portables must be removed, it troubles me that I heard the phrase "mission creep" many times. The Board has an obligation to remove the portables and reimagine the libraries in a fiscally responsible manner, but it felt as if members were only inclined to do the minimal amount of work. Indeed, I can't even say with confidence whether the committee supports the library's reimagined initiative, and I hope that will be made clear in tonight's discussion. If we could just remove the portables and be done with it, we'd have gotten rid of them years ago. But Hinley needs to make up the space. Tacking on a few new classrooms to the school may keep things cheap, but it is not forward-thinking. I urge you to seriously consider the proposal with the new library and new gym. A great number of classrooms at Hinley are too small. They just don't work for today's teaching methods. Choosing the larger-scope project now alleviates this issue in the future. You capture a larger classroom size as a byproduct of a new gym and library, thereby extending the life of the entire school. Actual construction on these classrooms can be accomplished further down the road. If members do not support the larger project scope, it would be helpful to understand when or how else they imagine the needs of updated libraries and larger classroom sizes would be met. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walsh. There are no other comments at this time. Okay. Thank you all for the public comment. We will now move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to virtually see you. Forgive me, board members, if I repeat anything the board chair said, but since I wasn't there, I didn't hear it. Since nobody else heard it anyway, I won't be repeating it to the community. I'm glad to join this evening remotely, and I'm glad to share with you a positive, or sorry, I should say, a negative COVID test today. So I look forward, can't wait for the 14 days to be up to go back. Let me just, first of all, say to one of our colleagues who works tirelessly in behalf of all our students, and maybe most especially our support students. Now, Shirley Klein, she is celebrating her birthday today, so happy birthday to Shirley. I lead off with, again, just a massive thank you to the parents and staff for all of their work, particularly over the last couple of weeks. We have been accommodating storms, and I don't know what else this year can throw at us, but thank you for our staff and our parents for your accommodating quick notice, changes in schools, calendars, cancellations. Unfortunately for Tokaneep, they're going to have to make up an additional day, but we'll do that. We'll find a good way to do that. Again, as Jocelyn shared, many, many thanks for our parents for reaching out and really touching with appreciation our teachers' hearts and minds. It was greatly appreciated, as Jocelyn mentioned, right across the district. And indeed, for all of, many of the things that you do, most of the things you could do that are even unseen, behind the scenes, thank you for supporting our staff. It means more than, more than you may know. Thank you again to the board members. Once we talked about substitute teachers miraculously, instantaneously, we had 45 new subs. So they have been instrumental in helping us, which is a bit of a conundrum and a problem, and an understandable problem as cases of quarantine continue to arise. Congratulations to the boys cross-country who wound up. They were Western Regional Champions. To the girls' soccer team, who had an undefeated season and champions there, but just kept at the post at the end of the, at the end of the championship game. But congratulations to all our athletes for this particular fall. Continue to work with the thriving youth and designing the actual youth survey and plans for administration, which will be in the spring. I'll continue to keep the board updated. The Ox Ridge presentation, the board will see an abbreviation tonight. Parents will see an abbreviation. But the full report, the full presentation was done to the faculty and to the parents at Ox Ridge. It went so well that I don't even think the Ox Ridge parents had one question. So that was a good sign. Transportation study is ready to come before the Board. It will take one more administrative review, but it will be before the Board in December. Strategic planning, I would plan to bring back the draft of that plan in December to the Board. A reminder to people that we have used our first snow day. And thank you to the community members and to our students and staff for participating in turkey drives in most of our schools. It's nice to see that, again, we support people in need in our community. And as we approach the Thanksgiving holiday in behalf of the district, I'd like to wish every, all the families, more than anything else at this time of year, a safe and healthy holiday. I, for one, am tremendously grateful to be working with such dedicated and caring staff and professionals here. I get to work with some very special people every day. But I'm saying that, I'd just say, just a reminder to everyone in the community. I would join Jocelyn in this plea to please keep exercising healthy practices in order that we can keep our kids in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. Moving on to approval of minutes.
To point of order, would you like to repeat your statement if we change the agenda? Since the public, you know, Dr. Adley, or?
Maybe I could wrap up with it.
Okay, whatever you'd like.
Okay. Thank you, John. Moving on to approval of minutes. It is requested that the Board approve the following. Minutes of the special meeting and executive session held on November 10th, 2020. Do I have a motion? Mr. Maroni, second by Ms. Ritchie, all in favor? That is unanimous. Approval of the minutes of the organizational meeting held on November 10th, 2020. Do I have a motion? Mr. Maroni, Mrs. Stein, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Minutes of the regular meeting held on November 10th, 2020. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Parent, second by Mr. Maroni, all in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Moving on to any board committee reports. Mrs. Stein.
Good evening. The Policy Committee met briefly last Friday, the 20th, and the policies we discussed are on our agenda tonight for our first read.
Thank you, Mrs. Stein. Any other board committee reports? Mrs. Ackman?
The Finance Committee met on Thursday, November 19th. Elected officers, I will be serving as chair, which I'm happy to do, along with the members of the committee. We discussed at length the reports that will be presented by Mr. Luttrell tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Mr. Maroni?
The Facilities Committee met on Thursday, November 12th. Elected officers, and I was elected chair, and we will have two items on the agenda tonight to discuss. Items D and E on the feasibility of removal of portables and elementary classroom space.
Thank you, Mr. Maroni. Any other boards or committees? I think the Ox Ridge presentation will speak for itself. That committee continues to look at bids and specs throughout the week. And as Dr. Adley said, the presentation was well received by the parents and the community. Moving on, presentations and discussions. Progress report on Ox Ridge School Building Project. Dr. Adley?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have Amy here and Dave. Amy is the architect from SLAM, and Dave is ONG overseeing the project. I will say I give them, with my board's understanding, given the length of the agenda tonight, I give them some guidelines as to cut the chase, because the board has seen most of this, and just to give them a wee sense of kind of the schedule and just what it looks like and where we are right now. And a very shortened version of what the staff and community actually seen. So with that, I'll turn it over to Amy and David.
Great. Amy, you're gonna, are you presenting, Amy? Or someone? Okay.
Can you hear us, Amy? Samuelson?
Yes, sorry about that. I think I was muted. I'm sharing my screen now. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you for having us here. Amy Samuelson from the SLAM Collaborative, the architect of designing the Ox Ridge School. We've presented this design before, so I'll just quickly run through a recap of those design slides. But with me tonight is Dave Cravenzola from the joint venture of ONG AP. And Dave, did you want to mention who will be on site?
Yeah, so just really quick again. So my name's Dave Cravenzola. I'm with the joint venture of ONG AP. We're the construction managers. I'm the project executive. So as Dr. Adley had said, over the course of the last two weeks, we presented our entire team to the Ox Ridge faculty and to the parents, where each of the people who will be on-site each and every day, those listed on the left side there, introduce themselves and their roles on the project.
And at that time, I also introduced the fact that we will have a CA or Construction Administration representative from SLAM available on the site and at bi-weekly meetings with the construction team. And so between myself, who will stay involved throughout the construction, and Jeff Lamoth, we will be able to oversee and work with ONG AP as they build the school. As a reminder, this new Ox Ridge School will be built on the same site as the current existing Ox Ridge Elementary School. It will be built in the area on the south portion of the site primarily and extend a small area over where the existing building is today. And you can see that, once the existing building is removed, the assembly wing, which is on this left-hand side, would, will be built while the school occupies the new portion of the building, which includes all of the academics and the main offices. They'll be in temporary spaces where the ELP will be moving in the future, and they'll still utilize those spaces for temporary gymnasium, cafeteria, and library while those spaces are being built in the second phase. This is a view of the front entrance of the building. This is a view of the bus entrance and also the public entry for assembly spaces in the gymnasium, where there's a platform, or in the cafeteria, or in the Library Media Center, which is beyond in the back of this entry area. As we wrap around the corner, there's an area outside of the cafeteria that's provided for space for students to eat outdoors, as well as a small gathering space near that area as well. And further moving around the building, you'll note that the classroom wing, which is two stories, is actually built at the main level and then down, taking advantage of the slope of the site and building into the hillside so as to stay in keeping with the scale of the residential neighborhood. And the ELP is to the right of this image with its own separate exit and playground. In the center of the courtyard of that, the building, you'll note that the courtyard also spans the two stories. It actually goes into the hillside as well. Upper portion of this image is the ELP Commons. There's an amphitheater area. There's some spill-out space from the art room, which will be an outdoor classroom area. And there's also a private reading area, just some of the many spaces that will be activated by program use of the courtyard, which is safe and enclosed. The main entry is a beautiful interior space with prominence from the outside with all this natural glass and brings all this light into the building. It's also providing a secured entry vestibule and the ability to check in visitors. The Library and Media Center will be dynamic, stepping down the hillside, taking advantage of that tall space and an area for not just stacks, which are behind us in this rendering, but also for teaching and some exploration zone spaces. Cafeteria in this image has a wave ceiling and a large glass wall, again, spilling out to the outdoors, really providing that indoor-outdoor connection. That's so important. And this is one of the images of the Learning Commons. We know that learning happens everywhere, but we also want to advocate for that and allow for students to work in small groups, to collaborate with other teachers within the same grade level and to have some nice group learning and private learning areas available to them as well. The classrooms in this image are on the left-hand side of the page, and the main corridor, which brings you from pod to pod to pod, each pod representing a grade level, is on the right-hand side. Dave?
Thanks, Amy. So, again, our main focus of what we've talked to the staff and the parents about is safety. Obviously, one of our goals is to keep the people inside the project safe, but what's more important to convey to the community is how we work to keep those people outside of the project safe. So, you know, we went through our COVID-19 protocols and making sure that all of our employees wear masks. All of the employees working on the project will be going through a background check before they're allowed onsite. And our project manager, George, and our superintendent, Scott, and our project engineer, Brian, will be onsite full-time. They will the ones be, they are the ones who will be in daily contact with Luke Forshaw coordinating all the activities of the construction work to make sure that work, you know, in and around the school is not affected, and that coordination and interaction is going to happen throughout the project. Next, Amy. A couple of the things that we focused on, too, you'll see in a couple of slides here, is fencing, separating the construction work from the occupied school. Being that it's a new school, there's no need for us to go into the school. So there's no need for any construction workers to be in the school. There is no smoking on the job site. All the workers receive a unique identification badge that they wear on their hard hat so that they're identifiable. And, you know, again, they are, they are kept completely separate from the school environment. Next. These were a couple of site plans that we went through, and I know we've talked about these before. The area in yellow is the construction area when we first start. We're going to leave the entire existing parking lot functioning. That way, the students can, the students and, can be picked up and dropped off as they currently are with the dedicated bus and parent drop-offs. But that'll allow us to, when we put some fencing up to get started, there is an area along the building where Amy is, where we're actually putting up a hard, a wooden barrier, and we'll show you that in another slide. That's a, that's a solid wall, whereas the rest of the fencing surrounding the job site will be a chain-link fence with a privacy screen on it. So that's how things start for about the first five or six weeks. And then, once we get into And then, once we get into constructing the rest of the building, we are decreasing the size of the, the main parking lot. We are still able to keep a dedicated bus loop and parent loop. We are, we are able to add some additional spaces where there weren't some before to help offset that. And these are discussions that we've been having with Dr. Radley and Principal Forshow and the staff throughout the process. So, and that's really the way things are going to look until we complete the academic wing, which the, if you go to the next slide, Amy? Yep.
One more?
Yeah, we can, we can go past that one. That's not necessary. I think the next one's going to be milestones. Yep, so the main milestones are, well, we should be starting onsite. By the end of next week, you'll start to see some fencing going up. And then we're going to bring our field office, our temporary office out there. And then you'll start to see excavation activities happening into December. And then we're going to be turning over the academic wing in February of 2022. Once February, once the students move into the new academic wing, we're going to be moving them out of the existing school, demolishing the existing school, and then constructing the new assembly wing, which will then be completed by February of 2023. And then there'll be some, some finish-up work, some plantings in the spring of 2023. This slide illustrates what we're talking about with the two different types of fencing on the project. The white one, there is that wooden barrier, and we're using something similar at the Maritime Aquarium right now, where it's a hard barrier, helps with sound, with dust, and is a true separation where there's a lot of traffic coming in and out of the school. So that, you're going to see that adjacent to the main entrance to the existing Ox Ridge School. And then the rest of the site will be enclosed by that fencing with the blue scrim on it, as Amy's pointing to there. And that really, in a nutshell, I believe that's it for, for our slides. Yep.
That was pretty good.
Did it?
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Dave. Open it up for any board questions. Mr. Seeny?
Just a quick one, where's the off-site parking for the construction workers?
So we're working on that right now. Kind of that has not been finalized yet. It will probably be a lot in town. We're also finalizing with the Merritt Parkway Conservancy, a off-site for soil storage. So those are both kind of in process right now. Thank you. Good question. Thank you. Any other board questions? It's been a great group to work with. Thank you, Amy and Dave. And a big thank you to Dr. Forshow and his team up there and Dr. Radley and Mike Lynch. The time and energy that's put into kind of organizing what happens on that site while a school is in session is incredible. It will continue. We also have met with Chief Anderson, First Selectman Stevenson, myself and Dr. Adley. We'll continue to monitor and look at the traffic situation up there and adjust accordingly, especially as construction starts. So, thank you both.
Thank you for your team. We appreciate it. Thank you. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Moving along, update on school. I'm going to say opening, because we are open, not reopen. Dr. Adley?
Yes, I just want to just check, Mr. Trunberg, Mr. Trunberg, are you putting this slide up or am I?
We have it up in here. You can also share it from your screen if you'd like.
Let me just see if I have that there. I'll just talk to it from, from where you have it there. It's fine, I think. If you just move it through, it's fine. Chris, can you just move this slide, please? Mr. Trunberg, I said, just to advance it, thank you. So, again, I'll be very brief about this because we've sort of transitioned into the hybrid model and I appreciate at the secondary level, and I think what that's settled in fairly well, actually very well. I think it's been very well received. Our staff has done a tremendous job. They're very astute and skilled at doing that at this particular point. We just talked a wee bit earlier about the school cancellations. So, moving forward, school cancellation, we're going to a remote, remote scenario, provided, of course, we have access to electricity and internet service. The 180 days, 900 hours, we did hear back, we were given a concession of basically five hours. So, as I said at the last board meeting, we certainly will come back to the board with a plan as to how we're going to mitigate those losses and those hours and how we are going to, for the want of a better term, make them up. So, we will do that after the break and just bring back a proposal of what that might look like. Our hybrid, and really, there's not too much to say about the hybrid and remote learning, where we are ready to go at a given moment's notice. So, the staff and administrations have done a great job preparing themselves at the secondary level. Just, I know, something to note, we have added in microphones. So, they were made available at the middle school and the high school. I think they'll also help. We've been in response also to the remote learners who are just from generally. So that will help those children too. Not much change in athletics, and January 19th is the date. We're just waiting to hear how that's going to impact the spring season. So, really haven't heard too much in that regard. And you'll see tonight, just some of the, the financial report that we've increased 2,300,000 to 2,400,000. Most of that was in increased expenses for YMCA. But you'll get a wee chance to see that a wee bit later. It hasn't changed significantly. But those, that's a minor modification. Certainly, the cases, the case numbers that I have here, and the next slide is what was as of Friday, when the board received their packet, so it doesn't reflect over the weekend, and it doesn't reflect today's statistics. But yes, clearly, clearly, the cases have increased, both in Darien and in the Fairfield County. And we are now one of the red zones as well. So, move it forward, please, Chris. So, the most late recent data, we have 80 cases in Darien, so I put this over a rate of 26.3. As I said, in communication to parents, we would certainly reconsider whenever it went red, red, red. And that's what we did. And we did that in close consultation with our medical advisors and the State Department of Education. And as you can see, there are many, many towns that are in the red at this particular point. It's nearly 85% of the state is in the red. As of today, even on, on the State Department call with the Department of Public Health, they are not looking at this as just finite goalposts in terms of, if these are the numbers, then this is what you absolutely have to do. So this is, which is really what we've been trying to do, triangulate the data, look at the context of what's happening in school, look at the context of what's happening in our area and in our community. So, with that, we did have that meeting, and I did communicate accordingly that we remain in this model. Now, I will be pragmatic and say that teachers have done a super job, but also teachers are being quarantined. And we have an average of about 30 people who are being quarantined. We probably cover staff, about half the staff on any given day. Now, recently, actually, it has actually been better than, than just over a week or two ago, but it might get worse without the assistance of those 45 subs, that we would be in a tough situation. So, all of those things are true. And if it gets to the point where administratively running the school is such a problem, and we can't have coverage for classes or safety of kids, then invariably, we would have to consider another model. I can't tell you when the next inflection point or reflection point is going to be as the numbers increase and as the circumstances around change, we will reflect accordingly. We are in practically daily communication with our medical advisors. Please know that we are, we are making the decision always in the best interest and safety of our students and staff. We do know, at least, the medical advisors share with us that the secondary level can be more susceptible to the virus and the elementary school age children. And we're not seeing it being spread in the schools at this point by our students. And so, that idea that the school is, appears to be one of the safest places is actually, as far as we can tell, true. You can see it from international studies, that most international countries at this particular point are actually closing down everything else but the schools, because they feel that they're the safest places. But that being said, looking at contextually here, we're going to take it day by day and assess as we go along. But we're certainly not being casual or cavalier about people's safety and health. And I want to thank the staff, because even in the past couple of days, without the staff stepping up, many of them cover classes over and above, beyond what they have to do. If they weren't chipping in, now we wouldn't be able to make it work. So with that, I'm very appreciative of all of their efforts. But I'm saying that currently, we're going to move forward with the model. And again, if we see a evidence qualitative or quantitative, that we think we need to come back to the table about then, we won't be shy about doing that. The rest of the metrics for Connecticut and Fairfield have also increased. I just, I just show you again, the, the heat chart. The heat chart, again, just shows that it's not a dynamic, sorry, a finite situation. Chris, can we just advance the slide, please? So, it shows that there's decision-making in between each of the categories. So, I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that for the moment. The number, number of students, if you could go back to that slide, Christopher, please. The COVID, the COVID slide, and each of the, each of the areas, locations. So that's, that's really where we were on Friday, and I believe it's probably, I don't know, Alicia, is it updated today? I can't hear it, but that's okay. Anyway, our nurses were working it. It is, alright. So it's, so it's been updated, and I can certainly get the latest one out, but that was the one that was in the packet Friday. We have some increases to it. But with that, I'll certainly happy to entertain questions from the board.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. I'll open it up for board questions. Mrs. Stein?
Chris, how many remote learners do we currently have? What's the latest number?
Give me a second. Go to the next question, and I can check. Wow. Okay, any other further board questions? Mrs. Stein?
This is for Alicia. I'm sure most of us saw the CDC's announcement that there's a potential change in the length of quarantining with a commensurate negative test. So, I guess I just sort of put it out there. If that is the case, and we are going in that direction, we should be prepared to figure out how we're handling testing, if that's going to be the new way of doing things.
Right, that, I heard about that, and I'm assuming that that will come through the State Health Department about how we're going to handle further quarantining. And then, I did speak, I've talked to a couple of people regarding testing, and if we, you know, decide as a group that that's something that we want to be able to provide, we can talk about that further later. I just, you know, at this point, I know the testing is hard to obtain due to the amount of testing that's happening. So, that's something, you know, once they come out with that from the State Health Department, maybe we can look into a little further.
Okay, thank you.
And go back to your question. The last full week of data we have from last week was 649 students. That includes students who are quarantining as well as optional remote learners.
Chris, can you break that out for us? I'm sorry, can you break that out so we know who are full remote by choice and who are remote via quarantine? Is there any way to get that?
Yes. While you get that, I'll ask for other questions. Thank you, Mr. Trunberg. Any other board questions? Yes, Mrs. Perrin?
Thank you. So, I think that the elementary principal did a great job of sharing their plans, where if we do have to go back to a hybrid or remote situation, of what has changed from last spring and even from earlier this fall. And I'm just wondering, for those of us that may have heard, both of the community members who have not, did not, were not able to watch that, if you could just briefly, Dr. Adley or Mr. Trunberg, to share what will be different, because I do think there's a concern from some, from some elementary parents, that it's, that it's going to be the same, and I, my understanding is not. So I think maybe to allay some fears or concerns, just to briefly share what would be different would be helpful.
Chris, do you want to just answer there?
Yes, but I'm doing math to answer the other question.
Okay, all right. Well, okay. Sarah, is it primarily with middle school, high school, or elementary school?
Elementary.
Well, so, so essentially, there's, we understood that, I mean, the bottom line is essentially, we knew we had to do additional live instruction. So that's, that is your main, that is the main change to it, that there's more live instruction embedded. Now, we do rely on the teachers, the same way in a classroom, where teachers have the opportunity to tailor their instruction and make decisions. There is some opportunity in there for them to do that, and some independent time to do that. But the bottom line is, it'll be a change in, in the amount of time that there's instruction, actually live instruction going on. And for those, some of the, some of the feedback that we're getting from people who have to actually quarantine and they're experiencing some of this is, because they're obviously coming into classroom a little bit, but that is being well-received. So, to some degree, that's being replicated. But there'll still be some flexibility within the schedule, but the schedule is, there is, there's obviously a schedule, and there's just more time built in for real-time instruction. If Chris wants to add that, he can.
I'll just add that the, the day is a full-length school day. And the way that it's broken down by each grade level has portions of the day that are, the language that we've been using is the direct instruction, independent practice, and then always coming to closure for each of those subject areas, and that's staggered throughout the day. So, parents can expect that, that full day of school with a special as well every single day. And then the DI block, as we've had to, where there could be individual conferencing, small group work. If a student receives special education services or SRBI intervention services, they would happen during that time as well. So it will, it will certainly will not look like it did in the spring, because there's just much more consistent synchronous teaching. But there's also a balance of the whole day cannot be live, because it's not what's best for kids, and that's not a great way to learn. So it's trying to strike the perfect balance as best we can.
Great, thank you both.
And do you have your number yet?
Yeah, so the challenge with this number is it changes every day, so every day that there's a... But right now, more than half of the students that are remote are optional remote. So, between 350 and 400 are optional remote. And then the rest, like, you can see who's quarantining based on, great, on that.
Thank you. Dr. Adley, I would ask, is there any kind of high-level view you can give us along with Mrs. Sion on absenteeism? In terms of teachers, and kind of maybe a little view as to where we were the last, yesterday and today? It seems like you've got it covered with all the great people that have stepped up, but just kind of a high level around that, because I think that definitely impacts model.
Yeah, yesterday, today is, one day, again, with teachers hanging in there for us, one day doesn't necessarily replicate the prior days. So, just over the last week or so was somewhat challenging. The increase in rate of absenteeism, but not necessarily due to illnesses and quarantine, was nearly, in some cases, three times it might, and we were only able to cover half the classes. Recently, that is not quite as bad, and we're doing, we're able to cover the classes, and there's less, there's less absenteeism for the reasons. Marge, you want to clarify anything, if you wish?
No, I think the only thing I would add is that Alicia and I sent out some guidance to the administrators about, you know, teachers, when they decide that they may need to quarantine, we're going to encourage a conversation so that we can see, A, we need to contact trace, but B, if there is a real reason, I think everyone wants to quarantine out of an abundance of caution, and we certainly don't want to expose anyone, but we're going to have, you know, meaningful conversations. And I think it'll help Alicia if she needs to contact trace as well.
Thank you both. Further board questions. Mrs. Akman?
So, a couple of questions, but they're related. In terms of, I understand when we have a need to cover staff in order that we've had to close schools at the secondary level because of staffing shortages. At the elementary level, how would that? At the elementary level, how would that play out given that we have five separate schools? So if one school couldn't cover, can we move people around? Would we maybe shut one school? Would we shut all schools for a day if one had to shut? Just.
So the answer to that probably, Mrs. Akman, is if we had to close one school, yes. But your principals very early in the morning are trying to share staff where they can, whether substitute staff, interns, transient staff, I mean, they are doing their best to actually share our staff. So I think that's just probably yes to all the parts of your question.
Well, and can I just ask a follow up to that? I think we've had to make some last minute calls at the secondary level. And I imagine there may come a time that we have to make that the elementary level, given that arguably it's slightly easier at the secondary level with childcare. Can you speak a little bit to the elementary parents and what they might need to prepare for? Because at times they short notice childcare as an issue, coverage, workdays. Just speak a little bit to if you had to make a decision. Are we expecting notice like, oh, we would go hybrid remote and you have a couple of days to get ready? Would it be a game time decision? I just think we need to let our elementary parents know kind of what to expect.
So these decisions usually start, these decisions usually start the night before. So where we see absenteeism, we try and work on that. Marge does her best to fill those positions. So in some cases, if we can give people that opportunity, like if we know the night before, then certainly we will tell people. But in some cases, we don't know. In some cases, we don't know until early morning, until people call in. And then it is again time decision. So I would say that I would ask the community moving forward to have plans accordingly. If we have to along the way, make a change for one or more of the schools. We'll try and give people, if we're changing as a system, we'll certainly give people notice of that where we can. If we can't, people will probably know what's happened in some event that sort of precipitated. But other than that, I think people have to be ready for the unexpected where they can.
Additional board questions, Mrs. Stein.
Mine is directed more towards Rich. Given our athletics are pushed back to January 19th, for those winter sports that have facilities rentals attached, did we have COVID clauses? Are we able to recoup some of those expenses? How are we handling?
So in some cases, we'll get a credit attached. It could be this year or it could be for a future year or the following year. But we've, Chris and I have been talking with a number of different places to work that out. So we would expect a credit on the bill.
Additional board questions. Mrs. Akman.
So Dr. Adley and maybe Alicia, this is you as well. I know that we are, the goalposts are always moving. But is there any definitive thing that community members should know? If X happens, I know we've talked about staffing shortages, but is there a definitive number? If we hit, we would need to change models? Is there some finite goalpost somewhere or no, this is all going to remain?
No, there's not. And that was reiterated today by the Connecticut Department of Public Health to all superintendents.
Any further board questions? Thank you, Dr. Adley. Thank you, Alicia. Next up, discussion and possible acceptance of contemplated gift from the Blue Wave Booster Club. Mr. Chris Manfredonia.
There I am. Can anybody hear me?
Yes, Chris.
Thank you for having me tonight. So as you've seen in the past, twice a year, the Booster Club will reach out to our athletic programs. This time for our winter and spring teams to find out what are the nice to have for our programs? That's not supported by the Board of Education budget. So this go around, we have a few of our spring teams making some requests to the Booster Club for consideration tonight from the board. The first two would go toward our boys and girls tennis programs. The first request from those programs would be two additional benches that would be put in place of the newly resurfaced courts at the high school. You've probably seen a couple of years ago, the Booster Club has previously donated a bench. These two benches will be similar to that and be placed around the circumference of the of the courts for spectators to view. The second request of the tennis team is for a storage bin to be placed outside the fence area. Right now, the team keeps their tennis balls and the scorecards inside the building. This is making it a little easier for them to access those on a daily basis for practices and matches. And the third request we have is from the baseball program for a portal pitching mound. This mound can be moved on and off the playing surface of the varsity field. Could be used to throw batting practice from in front of the normal mound that you see on the varsity baseball field. So it wouldn't disrupt the clay on the pitching mound.
Thank you, Mr. Manfredonia. Any board questions around this very generous gift from the Blue Wave Booster Club? Good. May I have a motion to approve the gift from the Blue? Yes, Mrs. Akman.
The contact person on this, is this just a contact for the Blue Wave Boosters? Or is this one individual donor donating?
No, this is just a contact of the Booster Club, Brian Stewie.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the gift from the Blue Wave Boosters pursuant to the memorandum dated November 12, 2020? May I have a motion, Mr. Seeny, second? Mrs. Ritchie, all in favor? That is unanimous. And again, a big thank you to the Blue Wave Booster Club for that very generous donation to tennis and the boys' baseball. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next up, update on draft district feasibility study for the removal of portables at the elementary schools and the library reimagined. Mr. Dr. Adley?
Yes, I'm just trying to get.
He brought in.
I was meant to give John the heads up as soon as Christopher stopped talking. And I'm just giving him a heads up now. So give me a second just to see if he logs on there.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask the board maybe to consider just going to the next agenda and I get him up?
He's in.
He's in. He's in? Thank you. Mr. Shay, have I cut? Oh, there you are. Okay.
Yes.
John, thank you for joining us.
Certainly.
The board is all yours. Board members should have in front of them, I believe, the actual drawings that were shared with the facilities committee that had the materials last week from the facilities committee. And this afternoon, you sent in a couple of just revisions and they have that in front of them. So as you know what your audience is.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to present our work this evening. We appreciate the opportunity. Want to share our knowledge as it applies to this study. A couple of key steps to this process. Gathering input, testing assumptions, establishing key priorities, finding opportunities, exploring multiple options. We think our most important job as part of this process is to help, to help and assist you and seek to reduce questions that could come up years later, like, why didn't we think of this? And why didn't we do that when we had the chance? So with that, I'd like to go through a summary of our work today. I'll share my screen and share some of the material that you have, I believe, printed and in video. So what I will do is I will mostly, I'll go fairly quickly through all of the different material. And, oh, good. Thank you so much for the, I like being able to see a screen that looks at the screen that we're all seeing. So I appreciate that very much. So one thing in this, in this opportunity here, I will look through the, I'll stick to mostly the drawings. So that way, I know there's some written, this is the overall document that starts with the written narrative and then has a series of drawings in it. But I'll stick to mostly talking to the drawings. That way, we can orient ourselves to the graphic visual items and then follow up at the end with some of the conclusions and summaries that we prepared. So the primary focus of the study is the removal of the portables at Hindley, Holmes and Royal. And enhancement of library media centers into modern learning commons across all the schools. We're continuing the great work of prior studies that have been done and the different school board teams that have met and coordinated and brought many of these great ideas forward. We've gathered information from central administration, from the school principals, from media center specialists. We visited the buildings. We've seen how well the existing schools are maintained. The amazing things that happen within them that point to the community's incredible commitment to education. We've listened to everyone in the process, assimilated the information through the core group of the administration leading to the study. We've then developed multiple options. So throughout this, you'll see that there are various options. So an overview, I'll do a quick overview of the library media center learning commons. We'll look at the three elementary schools that have the focus with the removal of the portable. And then we'll just quickly take a look at Tokenik, the middle school and high school library media centers. So overall, establishment of, or the formation of the library media center learning commons portion of the project, portion of the study is looking at establishment of zones within the space. The various functions that occur within those zones, how they relate to one another, what kinds of connections and separations are needed. We developed a prototype space plan, one that focuses on flexibility, largely demonstrated with the expansion of teaching and research area. So the teaching and research area that functions like a classroom could then be expanded to a larger group presentation space with flexible bookshelves and circulation area. That way, you can move the furniture around. You can go from a classroom setting of 25 people up to a larger setting. We're looking at even more than 70 as we show here. You know, 80, 90, potentially 100 within a, within a library media center space. So that's, in the development of our prototype, we were looking at about 3,400 square feet. That's something you'll see throughout some of the different plans as we look at them. With Hindley, the first school we'll look at. And when we get to the summary, you'll see that there's a, that there's a priority list that was developed based on need. So we'll go in that order. We're going to go Hindley, Royal and then Holmes. So Hindley, we developed two different options. And it's important to understand that the removal of portables here, the spaces that are located in the portables now at Hindley, or at least before the COVID pandemic and the revisions that had to happen, include band and orchestra, general music, world language, the idea lab and interventions. So this option one takes and looks at putting a new band and music room, new band and orchestra and music room in a new addition. It includes a couple of general classrooms on the second floor of the new addition. It includes the programs like world languages and the idea lab would be incorporated into some of the existing classrooms. That thus the need for some new general classrooms in the addition. And then the library media center as a new addition, ultimately resulting in the removal of the existing library media center at Hindley due to its not ideal infrastructure, some of the challenges with the space, the existing space at the library media center at Hindley. So very quickly then, option two at Hindley is very similar to option one in virtually all ways, except for a new gymnasium. This new gymnasium at about 4,700 square feet would be much larger than the existing. And the existing space would be converted via renovation to the band and orchestra room, general music room with associated storage. So that's effectively the layout for the second option here at Hindley. One key point to point out here is we do gain some classrooms also at Hindley because the DSL program is relocated to Ox Ridge when that opens. So we gained some additional classrooms there. At Royal, somewhat similar. The four portables at Royal currently contain band and orchestra, general music, world language and gifted program and interventions. Those portables are located more or less off screen here. They're up above the location we're showing for the new addition at Royal. But very similarly, in terms of an addition, the band and orchestra room, the general music room, there are four classrooms shown at Royal because in the location of the proposed new addition at Royal is where you currently have four first grade classrooms. So there's a multiple step here to looking at Royal. And thus, the reason why it's a more, a little bit more extensive addition renovation project. But it looks at accommodating world languages and the idea lab as well in some of the existing rooms that are being vacated when the ELP program moves to Ox Ridge. Similarly, new library media center for Royal. The existing building where the existing library media center would be removed, demolished. That Royal has more infrastructure challenges to its space in that, for that library and media center. So the need, certainly the need is great and is accommodated in the plan here. So option two at Royal, very similar to Hindley, is a new gymnasium and putting the, renovating the existing gym into a band and orchestra room, general music room. Overall, the same program here, the spaces are somewhat adjusted here so that we don't get too wide or too deep with the new building, but effectively orienting things to, in that, in that nature. So Holmes is, here we shift our plans. So we're looking at the first floor of Holmes. Band and orchestra and music are the programs that are currently in the portables here. So we look at finding new space for band and orchestra and music, looking at general classrooms so that we are able to replace the general classrooms that are you, that are going to be used by band and orchestra and music. And then renovation of the library media center. But I should point out, there is a small addition here in this, in this area where we'd be adding on for band and orchestra. So these, the Holmes addition would be a two story addition. Looking at that as the most efficient way to add on at that location, giving us some additional classrooms. So as I mentioned, then the Tokenik Library Media Center being revised and revisioned, the media center at the middle school as well. and, and revisioned, the media center at the middle school as well and, and high school. So one of the key components here in the high school and one of the great opportunities is to use that reading room at the, at the center of the space as a, as a great presentation space. And, and we're looking at, you know, these are, these are studies. This is the, this is the standing or, or the point in time where we're looking at the study here. We're, we're still assimilating some comments and reviews and, and looking at how we can make the most of, of these spaces. So I will move to the summary of the the summary table that was prepared for for these spaces, for, for these, you know, thinking specifically about replacing the portables at, at Hindley, Royal and Holmes. Effectively looking at what is currently in the portables, then thinking what spaces are being relocated to Ox Ridge, proposed new spaces in, in the new addition that are part of option one, proposed renovation of space as part of option one. And then in option two, we're talking about the proposed new addition spaces for option two, proposed renovation spaces for option two. Priorities, thinking about which school has the highest priority in terms of the need. And then, and then we were looking at some opportunities and constraints. So I think we, we've, we've, in, in, in option one, we've accomplished the goal of replacing the portables and providing new or enhanced library media centers to the level that the building infrastructure should and could accommodate. Thus the reason Hindley and Royal have new library media centers in, as part of the new additions associated with that. We list the, the, the approximate floor area for each of these additions. We don't quantify areas of, of renovation yet, but that's an important consideration to think about is that in, in the, the world languages and the idea lab at, at and the classrooms and the classrooms that are part of the formal, formal DLC program. All of that goes into these overall understanding of, of costs and parameters. So we're looking at established, estimated project costs thus range because there's a lot within the components of a construction project and an educational enhancement and some of the other, other elements that FFA and technology and, and, and studies and whatnot that would have to be done. But overall, we're looking at generally the, the, the idea that Hindley option one, anywhere from about $9 million to $11 million. Option two with the gymnasium option, anywhere from 10.5 to 12.5. So, so the net effect here is looking at option two to option one, and it's really at both schools, Hindley and Royal is about $1.5 million. Difference to have the new gym. We're looking at some of these opportunities and constraints across all the schools. So the new, the new gym, I, I list here some items, the 10-year test. You're wondering what's the 10-year test? That's thinking about 10 years from now, asking, you know, reducing the, the, the question that could come later is why didn't we think about that at the time? Or why didn't we do that at the time when we had the chance? Those are the kinds of tests, I think every project wants to withstand and, and say that did the best opportunity to, to address the needs and to look further and say, what are the next challenges going to be? What's going to make this school the best one? How does it compare to the new school at, at, at Ox Ridge? That's something to always think about is that Ox Ridge is going to have a new larger gymnasium. So there, there's going to be comparisons from school to school. That's another pressure that has to be addressed and considered. The ability to have more community use in, in the school. There, there can be more outside recreation groups that can use the school and use the, use a larger gymnasium. You can have two physical education classes meeting simultaneously with, with a divider. That, that can be a programmatic, a great programmatic accomplishment to be able to, to do that. And then what code over 600P means, that means that just based on building code alone, we haven't done seating layouts and things, building code alone would allow you to, to, to have the capacity for, for over 600 people within the, within the gymnasium for a seated, a seated event. So it's a, you'll notice that if, for the example, by going to the gym, going from option one to option two at both Hindley and Royal, that, that increase is about the same million and a half dollars by adding the gymnasium. It's, it's the, it's the kind of dollars that at this time and, and when considering construction projects, it's, it's an ideal time to do, not to take an opportunity like this because it can, it can maximize dollars. Conversely, if we were to go in the other direction and start pulling money out, pulling scope out, you, you would see similarly that the reduction in dollars are, are, are little as, as the, as, as things get, as things start to reduce in size. So Holmes, just to give a quick update on Holmes here, the, the idea of the, the four classrooms, the interventions, the band and orchestra, that small addition I mentioned, all contributing to, to, to an addition at Holmes in the range of 7.5 to 9.5 million renovations for band and orchestra and music and the library media center learning comments again. That one being done as, as a renovation of, of what's a beautiful space in the building. So also looking at, at, at Holmes, thinking about the opportunities and constraints, we have to look at both sides. The benefit to Holmes is that right now it, it has the largest core components, spaces in, 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 in the district, at least as far as the gym and library media center goes. The, the, the ability to add on at Holmes is much more, much more limited in terms of the parking, the, 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 the entry lawn in front of the historic part of the school and then play fields and play areas outside on the, on the west side of the building. And then to the north, it's pretty well pinned in by some sloping site and some stormwater conditions there. So I think that's the overall, the overall summary, the overall overview. I guess at this point in time, Alan, I'll turn it back to you and before we get into classroom, the, the somewhat related but separate classroom count, facility analysis we did as far as classroom count goes.
I think you're on mute, Dr. Adley.
Thank you, John. I just, just a reminder to the board that, and certainly Dennis or any of the facilities committee coming up date, this originally started at, at removing the portables. This was certainly something that was very, I heard loud and clear through the superintendent entry plan. And it's also been an ongoing discussion in, in the community. At the same time, we, the library reimagined project was underway and it was discussed during this process is this might be a better idea to get a handle on the scope of that. And then the architect was charged with ever anything else that made sense along the way and, and the way he was to do things or otherwise then to bring up back to the table. And this is, so this is where we are at this point. And it's exciting. I'm, I'm not going to be disingenuous with that. I think that certain things are needed and, and improvements and I get excited about doing things for kids and making improvement for them. So.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. Mr. Maroni, I don't know if you want any comments as the chair of the facilities committee.
Yeah. So we had a, we've had two meetings on this and I think there's some, some feeling on the committee that there, and it was referenced tonight on public comment as well, that there is some mission creep that this is bigger than what we had intended and, and originally asked for the plan. But I think John explains why they went this way and it's something for us to think about. I think the facilities committee is looking for some guidance and, and information from, from the greater committee, the greater board to, to, in order to make a decision and understand what else we might need. I think it's important to understand what Dr. Adley was saying as well as that, you know, this whole plan was done. I think we all want, and I think everyone in the community wants to, to remove the portables. We, we added the libraries in there to try to, to make sure we weren't tying the architect's hands by only looking at portable removal. But I think we have to kind of go back to our master plan and, and there was nothing in our master plan that ties to gymnasiums and whether we want to look at that or not. It's a, it's a question and I think the broader group has to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Maroni. I'll open it up to board questions. Mrs. Perrin.
It's not necessarily a question, but I.
Comments are quick.
Yeah. As a new member of the board, I, I was concerned about tying the libraries to the portables to begin with. I wasn't sure exactly why they were necessarily hand in hand. And I have to say that I really do very much appreciate the holistic look that has been taken at these three elementary schools because facilities are huge parts in education. And if you don't have, we have excellent curriculum, we have excellent teachers. We do not have excellent facilities in these three schools. And I don't know that everybody can be proud of these three schools. So what I'm hoping is that we can, we can take a broader look and, and not, not wear blinders and not be myopic in, in the way that we look at this. I do think that we need to take a broader view and say, if we are going to do something to these schools and the removal of, of portables is our number one priority. But if we're going to do that, let's do it in a way where we don't have to go back in three years and say, to exactly what he just said, we should have done this. Let's do it right first time. Because this has not been done right in the past and, and it, it needs to be done right. And I think making a broader look at it is the right thing. And I know that wasn't intended scope, but for me, that's okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Perrin. Additional comments or questions? Mr. Brown?
I had a couple of quick questions for John and then one for Mr. Lynch. John, just laid some of the numbers are on the slide here, which what we're looking at on our screen is the grid of the that you put at the end. And I'm just looking at the square footage and the pricing, taking for instance, Hindley is the first one. So looking at the 10,000 square foot option, option one, I'm seeing that as about 1,100, just under square feet, dollars per square foot. And I take a look at the gym and I figure the extra 2,000 plus square feet there. And I get a significantly lower number of about 714. So am I reading this right? The gyms are on balance cheaper to construct than classrooms?
I'm sorry. Yes. The, it's, it, it, it does get a little more because you have less walls and and more or less, yes, the answer, the short answer to your question is yes, it can be, it's more cost effective building a large volume that's in theory empty than if you were building a whole series of classrooms with all of the power requirements and all of the sinks and cabinets and those kinds of things. So this, so the per square foot dollar does reduce. I, I will caution the way that I, I do, I do admit that the way the chart is developed, it looks like we're only talking about new addition square footage and dollars. But really there's, there's a lot more to the picture. There's the, there, there's the renovation amount, there, there's an extensive amount of renovation. There's phasing costs. There's the fact that, that some of the, you know, that there, there could be multiple steps to when things happen. There's, there's the actual demolition and removal of the portables and the demolition of the former library media centers at Hindley and Royal. So there's, there's a lot more pieces to the dollars here than, than just taking a look at, at trying, trying to use, trying to come up with a per square foot number based on the, the math in front of you there, I think, I, I think is a little misleading, but, but overall, I tried to give a sense of, of the total scope of, of construction and related project costs as they pertain to the overall project that could be part of, related to these options in the study.
So, so these numbers include everything. It's not just the new structure, it's refitting.
Right.
Okay. And then I got a slightly different number for Holmes. Is that based on the two-story or is that you know, which I know we're space constrained where we can go? Or is that just, is there some reason why that's a little higher or just more demo?
To a degree, yes. There's, well, there's more. There's a, I, I guess there's, there's, there's a premium on a small addition that is part of the band and orchestra room. So there's some premium on that. And then the, the renovation of the library media center, that's a higher, that, that's going to have a higher cost
That's the old slab.
That, than would certain other renovations.
Yeah. If I recall facilities, there was an old slab of concrete that needs to be removed. Is that part of the cost here?
Right. It's, it's the slab of concrete doesn't need to be removed, but it, the, 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 the old gym floor runs under the gym wall and into the library media center, causing a lot of acoustical issues. So it's the old gym floor or, or what used to be a stage floor that really needs to be removed and, and let the, the slab on grade extend into up to the wall that's shared between the gym and the, and the library media center. And then some enhanced acoustical separation in the wall itself. So there's some foundation work. There's some infill of slab on grade and then there's some enhancement to the wall itself.
Thank you very much. I'm not holding to this. I know we're very, very preliminary. Do we know if there's any plumbing, wires, gas supplies, electric supply that would run over, run under, excuse me, where we're proposed, making changes or?
As far as we know, they're not. Anything?
We dug that trench before.
Mr. Seeny? So I was a new member when this board first addressed the portables again, and it's been, as a community member, watched it diligently. And I think the board's on the right track of prioritizing portables at the three elementary schools. What I tried to talk about during our committee meeting was dissecting this effort and overlaying what this board's focus was. The focus was the portables. And we will attach libraries reimagined because that was a priority of the board as I understood it. And there could be some synergies around the priority of the portables. And I think we've done a, this has unearthed some interesting things. Clearly, we also have Ox Ridge in play. It's almost like a three-dimensional chess or puzzle right now in how that plays into Hindley and Royal as well. So when I look at the three schools, those like look like it's going to be the priority of the board. Holmes is pretty easy. There's no moving chess pieces over to Ox Ridge. There's no need for, a, a library did not fit into this study. It's just basically replacing the space that was created or that currently exists in the portables in a permanent facility. And that can get started at a single date because you're not waiting for Ox Ridge space to come online. Then you address Hindley and Royal, which has that third dimension called Ox Ridge and how that plays. So you have a timing element there and synergy element actually with Hindley because we discovered through this study that the useful life of the library at Hindley is not suitable and would, would be part of the replacement and construction there. So again, attaching libraries and just, you know, we scored a point there, you know, it was useful doing that. And then what I'd say is for the remaining libraries and then this new addition called gyms, which as again, a community member, never really heard that as a priority. I don't think it's in the master plan and that, you know, in our committee meeting, we asked Mr. Lynch what the useful life is. I think, or maybe you can remind us what the useful life is of the two gyms, Hindley and Royal, but I think it was beyond that 10-year scope.
Yeah, tho- those gyms are in very good shape. They have new padding, they have new lighting. Most of them have new backboards. The floors have probably another 25 years before the wood would have to be replaced. You know, you sand them down so far, then you got to replace them. We're not there yet. Oh, they're in good shape. They're small. That's their issue.
So just to thank you for that, confirm that. So, you know, the way I think of it is let's, you know, hit the priority. You know, use the synergies that have been presented and then as a secondary effort of the board, kind of prioritize, are we going to be focusing on libraries? Are we going to be focusing on gyms? As we might think, are we going to be focusing on increasing classroom size in some of these buildings? And kind of backfill those secondary priorities, if I may label them such, you know, beyond the the replacement of the portables. And that's the way I'm thinking.
Thank you, Mr. Sini. Additional comments, questions? Mr. Brown?
I'll just add a comment. Um, you know, I I looked at this plan and I know we've waited on it for a while. I know the original scope was a little bit limited. Uh, only focusing on the libraries and the portables. I think removing the portables is the, it's a must, it's an absolute, it really is the wiggle room. That being said, I think we got a very conscientious, well thought out, bigger than expected plan uh, as presented so far. I I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be interested in pursuing the entire plan as proposed. That being said, I think there's more work for the facilities committee, subcommittee to do, there's more work for the board to do, but I think this is a very exciting opportunity uh, and has some long run potential, even though it may be broader than the original scope that launched it.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mrs. Stein?
I would say on the libraries reimagine, I would like to see a conversation with that library, the subcommittee we had, Jill, you were a part of it, to understand if what we have designed is what they were thinking. And I also think we need to reengage the PTOs because last we spoke, they were going to help fund the interior renovations or redesign of the spaces. So I I do think those are conversations that should be had. It may have been before your time, Dr. Adley, but um I think it's important to understand the dollar numbers that the PTOs have earmarked for this project.
Good. Mrs. Aitken?
I think Mr. McKem.
Sorry.
I'm trying to think about a lot of stuff on here, what I.
Jill, your mic, I don't. Yeah, thank you.
Oh, thank you. You have to button us up. Thank you. What I there's a lot on here. I'm thrilled to see portables on here. I'm happy to see some work on the libraries. What I'm having a little difficulty is with is when we start to talk about, I'm getting bigger than what we originally conceived, is how we, how this reconciles from a priority perspective with what the priorities were from the original master plan. We had indicated that we had at the highest level, three educational priorities, removal of the portables, which, you know, this covers relocation of ELP and size and advocacy of educational spaces. So I'd want to be sure that we you know, are we, are we meeting that goal here? Are we sort of meeting it? Or are we not meeting it all? We also had identified some site planning issues with tra- like traffic and parking. And again, I don't know that 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 those are in the scope of this effort. I don't mean that. But I think that the board may want to think about how we might prioritize. Certainly, as we're in the middle of COVID, we can see the the real impact of traffic planning at Middlesex, for example, many of the schools, but particularly Middlesex. So I, my question as a board member is particularly as we enlarge the scope, how we prioritize against some of the other things that we thought were important when we first conceived the master plan?
Thank you, Mrs. McKem. Mrs. Aitken?
So keying off of Mrs. Parent and Mr. Sini, kind of new to the board, understanding middle and maybe way too long looking at this. I feel like what, what keeps happening is we keep getting plans. They're going to facilities, portables are always the goal, and we get log jammed because what we're seeing as a board is you can't fix one problem without encountering others and you have to be willing to kind of address them all. So I think what we need to do is go back and look at our priorities, which was Ox Ridge, ELP, we've accomplished those two. Portables was the next thing. And no matter what plan we've looked at, whether it was the plan from, I think, six years ago now, or it looks like maybe we're even looking at a master plan in our upcoming sneak peek at budget initiatives, it's going to include something else. And so what we need to hear is either from the full board, what they're willing to do on that. Or we need to hear from facilities where they're getting stuck, because what happens is it's almost like the facilities is where these plans go to die, right? Like they, they just, they just go. And so then we have people saying, it's been so long, why aren't we fixing portable? So I think we can't expect that you're just going to fix portables and not touch anything else. So what are the other things we need to touch? I happen to have a similar view and and expressed it last fall. I wasn't sure why libraries per se were being tied to this exclusively. And I think that's maybe where we got stuck this time. We tied one thing to it. It has shown some benefits. But there are other things, maybe parking, maybe gymnasiums in some schools, but not all schools. Are we looking for parity between all schools and gym size? We have to decide that. Or else we're going to keep getting stuck. So I think a little bit of this is the board has to kind of roll up its sleeves and say, okay, fine, portable. But if, and maybe, John, it's a question for you and Northeast Collaborative. Is this what you would touch? Or is this what you were touched because you looked at portables and libraries? Or Alan, do you want us to wait and and hear what you have to say about a master plan? And look at it that way. But but we can't keep having really great plans and have stacks and stacks and stacks of papers with great plans.
All right. So I I would agree with that, Tara. And that's why we're, that's why we're, we're sitting here with it with the, which I would consider the tenants have a very good plan to complete, but what, what we were charged to do. When I took over the libraries reimagined were in, were and then there was furniture attached to it, but the, but the libraries weren't reimagined. And this was, this was designed to actually do what, what I hopefully, Jill was part of that committee, what the committee actually wanted to do was to redesign the libraries. Some of those libraries in the schools, they just they're invariably going to have to be changed. If the library is going to be the hub of the academic hub of the school, they're just, they're just woefully under they're just not, not appropriate and that they've outlived their, their, their age. So minimally, I think that our Northeast architecture have sort of done the charge of the portables and taken on the charge of the library. So we have, and I think the board has decided, do you want to do the libraries or do we not want to do the libraries? Um, I would advocate some of these libraries in the schools have have to be done and should be done. Uh, if there's another, the, the gymnasiums come into it because I think John has seen that those spaces were useful for relocating the, the band and chorus. Admittedly, they were never in the discussion, but uh, in the sense of if there was anything else that seemed to make sense for a discussion, then then they were put in in that capacity. But I think you have a plan here for for library, for libraries reimagined and removing the portables, provided the question can be answered. We're not going to have to rebuild these schools, are we? All the systems are in place. Are we going to be 10 years down the road and looking at like taking one of these schools apart again to completely rebuild it? I don't think that's what I'm hearing from from the architect or even from Michael. That that's, that's a need. If I was a board member to you, I would also be concerned about are we going to have to do a major renovation of these? Is this money well spent? And what I'm hearing is it is, but if it's not, someone should say so.
Mrs. Ritchie?
Thank you to facilities and thank you, John, for this very comprehensive plan. It goes beyond the scope of just portables and libraries, but I think unfortunately, when you open the hood, that's what happens because these, we have three buildings that have issues. And I've been passionate about this for, I don't know, probably eight years. I talked about it all the time in the RTM. And we need to solve the portable problem. Unfortunately, for Henley and Royal, that won't be solved until it sounds like February 23 at this point. But that doesn't mean our work should start, stop, and we should continue our work. And Holmes does seem like something that can be addressed more in the immediate term. But I also see an HVAC project for $4.2 million coming down the pipe for that building. So if there's synergies that we can find for these projects, we should be looking at that. And again, that goes beyond the scope of just portables and libraries reimagine. And my concern is now we also see a master plan potentially for next year. And how does that tie into all of that? So we, we see that we have a lot of work to do in these buildings. It goes beyond just the portables. And and we're also now seeing that we have classroom size issues. So I guess I don't have an answer. I don't have a definitive point of view. I just know I want to get rid of portables. But I also know I don't want to be penny wise and sound foolish. If there are other projects that can be tied into these, they should be. And if it means it goes from a $10 million project to a $20 million project, but it makes our buildings better for our students, then that's the path that we go down. So I'm sorry, I don't have a definitive path, but I think we have a lot of unanswered.
Mrs. Parent?
Thank you. I'm going to build off of, this is reduced point for a second. And Mike, so the $4.2 million HVAC program that we are coming at Holmes, is that something that requires a lot of construction anyways? And would this be better? And maybe put it in the park before, of course, but if, if we were to do this this plan at Holmes, should that be done at the same time as the HVAC process or is it a totally separate situation?
It's, it's totally separate and we've taken into account additional capacity so that we can accommodate an addition without having to reinvent everything. So it's, it's, it's a matter of the original 1933 building, which includes the library and and the gymnasium. It really doesn't have any adequate powered ventilation except for exhaust fans. You know, there's no tempered air coming in at any time of the year. Um, and 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 you have the original radiation system. It's got new sensors, new valves on it, but it's you know, it's, it's 80 year old equipment. It's, it's time to go.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Mrs. Aitken?
Dr. Adley, can you talk about this current plan that Northeast Collaborative has put forward and John? And and how it differs or would dovetail into your vision of a master?
Well, I, I think, I, I think the master plan invariably is going to continue to feed capital projects, but there may not be of such a, they may just be off the sort of systems, keep making sure that we're addressing the various systems that that we have in place, what, what's the upkeep of them. And then a master plan generally uh, would, would feed that model so that we can anticipate capital expenditures moving forward. I'm not so sure that I'm seeing it as a massive redoing of buildings.
Well, so maybe, and that's part of where I think the board is, is getting our, our last master plan talk about models much like Northeast has presented today, building, adding rooms, this. And so I think for some board members, at least myself included, I see what Northeast Collaborative has put here. I look at a master plan and then say, am I going to be looking at the same con- am I going to be looking at a different concept after I've already gone down the path of this concept? So you're saying that a master plan, which, sorry, I'm getting ahead of ourselves a little bit, but I think it goes into each other, is not going to conflict with what Northeast Collaborative has put forward?
I won't know until I see it, Ms. Aitken. But can I? I'll, I'll leave myself that out.
No, but I think, I think it's a valid question, having been around Tara's point way too long on this topic in conversation of portables and a master plan. Some of the things that I see is going back to all the conversation that everyone had, our original goals of Ox Ridge, ELP, and removing the portables. All right, from that, this has grown. But the other thing that I think what we learned going down the Ox Ridge process is we have to understand and look at Mike's capital plan. And I think this is a little bit what the Board of Finance wants us to do also. What are the dollars and cents to the point? $4.2 million on windows and roofing and HVAC? We've got to get a comprehensive plan of here's the cost to do this work at Henley, layer on the work that Mike has to do to those buildings out five years or 10 years. Then the decision has to come, is that a rebuild or is that a renovation? I mean, I think you have to go down and at least look at that. It may be based on all the feedback that we have, just renovations and additions. But I don't think we have to do the work of what are all the other costs that are going to be dumped into these buildings over the next five or 10 years. And I think we should, before we go down the path of looking at a new master plan, true up this to the original master plan a little bit. I think we should, because the thing that isn't discussed here is the addition of classrooms at Middlesex, which is bursting at the seams. And Middlesex also has the ability to add on in addition over there quite easily in terms of the way it was designed. So I think to everyone's point here, there's a lot of moving pieces. I think we need to put a stake in the sand that we true up and we can, as a board, decide it goes back to the facilities committee to do some work. Or we may need more people to to do some work on this. True up this plan to the master plan to see what the similarities are. Go back to the goal of removing the portables. We remove those portables, we move ELP, what do those classrooms and spaces look like at that school? And then prioritize these schools. I go back and forth with what I see and I hear. Is it Royal? Is it, is it Henley? That has more challenges or problems? And which one of those schools would land as a potential more of a renovation in addition or a potential new build? Just some of my thoughts. Mr. Brown?
Just to follow up on that, I mean, I, I've watched the ELP discussion on the outside before I was here, as long as some other people. You know, my concern sitting here now as part of the board is just losing momentum. I think we have a good, good project here. We have different people together. I would hope that we work to put this down through finance or we take other actions to keep us moving ahead, because I would hate to see someone else here in eight years saying what happened to the portables.
Mrs. Aitken? Mrs. Parent? Mrs. Aitken?
So I, I would, I would say, and, and sorry for those who are watching because you're seeing a little board frustration, not with each other, but we're trying to work through how to do this. The concern here is the board went out, approved a study on portables and libraries reimagine, and that's what we have now. So the question is, are we sending them back to do something different? Are we, are we looking to meld this? Like, we did approve them going out to do this with much discussion of whether this is the right way to go and we went. And before we go and spend that kind of money, if we have to rejigger, that's fine. But I, I agree, Mr. Brown, I, I think I agree with you in the sense that like, I don't want to lose momentum of work or study with this because we've, we've done it. What can we extrapolate? I think, I think back last fall, there were comments about a master plan, not a master plan, what to do. And we had this conversation and now we're having it again. So the question is, what are we doing? Right? Like?
Mrs. Parent?
I was just going to echo Mr. Brown and say that we, you know, five years ago, when I was PTO chair at Holmes, I remember sitting in Miss Blakely's office with the plans of this addition, getting so excited, and then the master plan was put into it. And what happened to it? And I, I really, we have to keep going. We can't, we, as a, we need to, we are, we owe it to the community to keep this project going. So I think we do need to come to a conclusion as to where, where we go.
Mrs. McKem?
Just want to reframe a little bit and remind us that we've built a, we've a cafeteria expansion, we've started a new school build, and we've done some other things. So we haven't put anything in a drawer just to be just to, just to push back a little bit. But to, I certainly respect that, that, that the community is very interested in the portable, and I certainly, and I share that, that interest and that, and that excitement about getting something done. I think the point made earlier that the Holmes plan here makes a ton of sense. There's not really a lot to debate here, and that's exciting, and I think that can move forward. I think where we look at Henley and Royal, then I just think we have to ask the question, do we want to do more than? And I think, I, I think somebody made the point earlier that for Henley and Royal, maybe we want to true up some of the other goals for those sites and see if the gymnasium is what we would prioritize, or if there are other things that we might want to do there first. So I would say I'm perfectly comfortable with the way Holmes is, but I would send Henley and Royal back. And then I think we need to ask the question about Middlesex classrooms as well. That's my thought.
Mrs. Stein?
I would just ask Mr. Lynch the question, if we split out and we start with Holmes and we sort of say we're going to do Henley and Royal later, my fear is on the momentum piece. We then create an equity issue where we've removed portables from one school and then we get stuck in this issue with Royal and Henley. So is there a way, are there efficiencies to be had to do these projects around the same time? In terms of, you know, competitive bidding. And how do we as a board move those other two along so they don't get left behind? My fear is we're going to go bolstering ahead with Holmes and then these other two are going to be languishing.
And just before you answer that, just to add on to that, do we have the capacity in town to handle that many projects as one Oxford is going to take to 2023? If we started Holmes, do we have the capacity to do more efficiencies or not?
Well, what I've said before is that i- if you looked at the other elementary schools and in a classroom addition on the middle school, you would want to split those four projects into two groups. And and possibly do Holmes and Middlesex first while you've finished up your deliberations on Royal and Henley. While that's all going on, you don't have space yet completed at Ox Ridge. You don't have space yet completed at Ox Ridge to move the people out of of Royal and Hindley, so you're not losing any time. But you're actually getting projects that are ready to go or more ready to go. They're being better formed and going forward. So that's that would be my suggestion, which I I know I've said it before. I think that's the best way to go.
Could I suggest, considering that facilities asks for help? Or or for, I'm sorry, not help, but like for some definitions, some guidance? It sounds like we're hearing that at homes, there's actionable work. To me, middle sex is increased scope. And this board has got to maybe have that on another night. What are we doing with middle sex? But maybe what facilities needs to look at is its capability to really dig down into the homes project and come back to us with it. And then Royal and Hinley need some more deliberation and we really can't do it until Oxford is ready. So we have a little more time to really flush out, have we looked at all the right components in those schools and have we prioritized what needs to be done in that school accurately? And John and Northeast Collaborative could help with that as part of their understanding of what they've done here.
The only thing, the only thing I would add to that is in terms of building, bringing into the facilities conversation and looking at the capital projects. Going out five plus years on those schools and incorporating them into. Whether it's an addition, whether it's a renovation, or whether you come to the conclusion that it's potentially a new build. If we don't do that exercise, we're kind of spinning on wheels. Mrs. Ritchie?
I agree. I was I was going to add, you know, specifically when I brought up Holmes. And that HVAC project, it's also for bonding. So if we're going to come with a. Seven and a half to nine and a half million renovation project, we should try to tie it to other large projects that we see coming down down the. The road in five years. And if we're finding that we're having spacing issues, I would like to try to incorporate that. It doesn't seem like it's as much a problem at Holmes as it is at Royal and Hindley, but. We're starting to see that we have classrooms that are inadequately sized for our students. So. If if let's do it right, let's let's try to incorporate. I guess what I'm saying is you can, I would like to see maybe more work being done on this. And we have time with Hinley and Royal because we can't move the LP and TLC out of those buildings until February of 23. So let's take that time and be thoughtful and try to incorporate what else is necessary into those projects.
So any other further questions or comments? So if what I'm hearing is for guidance for the facilities is to go back. Take a look at the capital projects that are coming on those buildings, work with the administration. I think some of this has to be done. In concert with the administration, Dr. Adley, from a priorities prioritization standpoint. Holmes looks like it's a quick win in the whole scheme of things, but I think you should look at. What can be done to those schools as we go through this process that can continue our path of getting rid of those portables? But that play into the bigger renovation or addition that needs to be done at those schools. And I would just true up a little bit back to the original master plan. Does that make sense?
I just want to be very clear, like, are are we expanding the scope of this? Because the original master plan informed us somewhat, so I'm just trying to like. I'm just trying to make sure that what direction, that we're very clear, the facilities committee, what direction we have, we're going on what the charges, because.
So I think we're taking, well, for instance, for Holmes, I think we're looking at what has been proposed. But also being thoughtful of what else is in the immediate future in terms of capital projects. I think we're just being mindful. And so if that's in a. More of a addition to the scope of the work, I guess.
I mean, I would I would add, Dr. Adley, and I mean, we haven't had this conversation in a while in terms of priorities, but. We've heard continuously that Middlesex is bursting at the seams. So. What, you know, where does that fit in to your prioritizations in terms of what that school may need? I think that's the stuff that needs to be put on the table. Mrs. McCammon?
So Duke, would you say then that basically what we're really asking now is for a reconciliation? That I wouldn't, I'm not, we're not asking for increased scope at this time. That what we're asking for is for you to take a look at what's actually proposed. How it lines up against what we believe the the large needs, large set of needs were. So we understand what proportion of the needs that were outlined in the master plan plus this are being met today in this plan, and we understand what the delta is. Then when we understand what that delta is, we can decide how to prioritize if we need to and move forward from there. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's a good summation. I just.
So.
Go ahead, Mrs. Ackman.
This is my concern, I think, before, when we when we hem in the specifics, like look at libraries and look at that. I think that's why we're finding ourselves in this flagrant again. It sounds to me like we have a seven point. Sorry, my eyes are so bad now. 7.5 to 9.5 million dollar ask to do. What we asked Northeast Collaborative to do. At. Homes. The question to the administration, is there anything else that needs to be done at homes? Because we're going to have to go before other boards and ask for this money, and we don't want to go back with our, you know, our handout multiple times. So I think the job for facilities would be at this point, really press upon, is this what you need? And then the administration needs to come and say, is there anything else, Mr. Lynch, that before we go out on a project, we want to go out. Fully flushed on a project. We don't want to go, let's say, to the Board of Finance, to the RTM and say, oh, we want to fix portables and libraries. And then be back next year saying, and by the way, we have to fix our roadways and our lights and our this. Let's give them a fully, this is our plan for homes over the next X year. So that's where I think Mrs. McCammon's right, there's a reconciliation. But. I think the question we're asking facilities is come back to this board with a plan for the schools in priority order. The priority is the portable. The board at one point tried libraries to that. Is there anything else that's a priority at homes that the board needs to know about? Because then we have to make some financial decisions or reprioritize.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Ackman. I I I, there's no, having been part of it for way too long, as I said early, there's no goal. In my view, to not keep this moving forward. We can't afford not to do that. I think Jill used the right word from a reconciliation standpoint. Personally, I'm fine with this, but on my view, you can't do this unless you. Go back and make sure that for homes, there's nothing else we need to do there. And what do we need to do five or 10 years out that maybe we should or could accelerate and get done all at the same time? I think we're spinning our wheels if we don't bring in the capital projects on these specific buildings. That's where I was going. Mr. Seeny?
Tara said it better than I did, so that's kind of where I was going. I guess I just want to make sure we're only looking at the elementary schools right now. We've heard about Middlesex. So let's, my recommendation, let's keep the scope at the elementary schools right now. And then if the administration wants to come forth with Middlesex, we'll look at that too, but I don't think we're ready for that.
I mean, the administration would have to tell us that there's now.
So I mean, are we good, Mr. Maroni?
So I mean, I I think Mrs. Ackman, I think we, there's this. History of, you know, things get thrown to facilities and then the facilities is asked to do something that they're not capable of doing or not not tasked to do, and it just kind of withers. Kind of just sits, Mrs. Barrett's point, sits in a drawer, but I just. And and I think we we can, we can tackle this, but realizing that this is maybe bigger than what we anticipated to be, but we'll we'll try to do our best job and and bring back something to the board. And we're excited to do.
Mrs. Ritchie?
So just so I'm clear, we're going to, we're prioritizing homes right now. But we're still keeping Hinley and Royal on a burner because as soon as we. We have some time with those, unfortunately, because we're delayed, because we need Oxford to be completed. But I think with with that, I mean, we have time that we can't move them, but we can begin to plan and start to do that work.
I don't think anything.
To me, I don't think we're going to wait until 2023 starts.
I don't think anything should be, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I might add for the public watching, it's not that we're prioritizing the sense of one. Over the other, which is more important, it's what one is immediately actionable.
Right.
Right. And when which one we can't touch yet because we 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 need other things to happen.
Right. And I wouldn't want to put any of it on the back burner. I think the work on Hinley's and Holmes. Can can continue, and you might come out of that work that those portables can be removed. In line with Ox Ridge coming online, and there's still maybe a lot of work to do with those schools, but then we accomplish that goal. Okay. Any other further comments, boards or questions? Dr. Adley?
Dr. Adley's pondering, I. I I just hope we're not proverbially kicking the can down the road and hopefully we're not doing that. But, you know. I'd actually be curious, I'd actually be curious if the architect has any questions about what he heard. Not that he necessarily would do the work or otherwise, but I'm just curious as to. Do you mind if I ask him a question?
Can you hear it, John?
Yes, I can. Yeah. So yes, if it's okay, then yes, I I think one of the. One of the board members asked the question or or made the statement, and I think it was really key. About. The prioritization. So our our stance in reviewing this is that. Really, we just went in order. There are a number of different factors here, but what we did was we went in order in terms of. Hinley being the highest priority because it has five portable teaching stations. Royal because second, because it has four and Holmes. Third, because it has two. So in looking at those. I I think it was important that that the statement was made that this priorities here, if if. If Holmes is the is kind of the first to go, it's it's simply because. It it has, it has the the least kind of standing in its way at this point in time. Which I I completely understand and and hearing more about the HVAC project. I I think there's, there's a lot there that is is important to say, okay, if if we're going to incorporate. Some kind of infrastructure project there or improvement to the HVAC system that it gets incorporated in. So I I think I I understand why and how. A a a project like Holmes would kind of move into the fast track. The other part of it, I guess, I would, I would make sure, just to make sure I understand the. It it does sound like there's some. So so one of the questions I think that that a board member asked as well. Early on had to do with the. Wha- what would you consider? It was it was more or less like, where where do where do we have to go to get? Hinley and Royal to be an ideal 21st century learning environment that is representative of Darien? And I believe that. That by, I I believe that this option two that was conceived here with the new gym. And the new library media center and some new classrooms. I believe that that is the start of getting Hinley and Royal to that point. I I think that. The the existing buildings, like I said, are 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 well maintained. They have a great. There there's, there's amazing things happening in them. There's a historical component to both Hinley and Royal that I'd love to see kind of. Reimagined and revisioned and 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 removing that media center is a big part of that. So I, there there's. There's so much opportunity at at all three of these schools and and those opportunities excite architects immensely. I mean, we we just. Love, love to see what's happening and and I was going to echo Mike's comment about the. What's happening underneath the library at 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 Hinley at Holmes. Yeah, I would agree with you, Mike. I was, I was on, I was crawling around those tunnels back in May and. We we looked pretty closely underneath the what where where that stage used to be and and there isn't. I didn't see any pipes either down there, but at that part, there's plenty under the corridors, but underneath the actual former stage, I didn't, I didn't see any. So I think I I think in terms of. Of our task specific to this, if I understand correctly, that we we do have some adjustments to make. We're incorporating comments. The the, there are some final touches to put on these plans to, I think, get get the last round of of. Buy in and and input and. I I think the, I'd like to see this this study serve as a offshoot of the former master plan. Because I do think it it touches on a lot of the tenants that the KGND report five years ago. Put forward, and I think this takes it, takes it into the next step. And add some new visions for for what these schools can be over over the next 20 and 25 years.
Thank you, John. Any other board comments or questions? Moving on, update on elementary classrooms base study.
So this this study came out of the facilities committee that asked for. Sort of analysis of the of the class sizes in regard to. How it meets the board guidelines of classroom size. So that was presented at the last meeting and if John wants to talk quickly to that.
Yes, I will. I will try to keep this very brief. So I will once again share my screen with some of the raw data. Some of the components that we. Prepared. Okay, looks like it's up there. All right, so I I did update this from after meeting with the facilities committee a week or two ago. But overall, the, to to give the brief summary here. The the, the intent was to take a look at. The classrooms, this is really a facility analysis. So so we were provided. Basically, the number and the number of each classroom at each grade level for each school. We were provided, what is the optimal student count? There's a low end, there's an optimal and a high end for each of the grade ranges. It shifts with grade ranges so that younger, younger students have smaller class sizes. And you you reach a a higher point with grades four and five. And then. Using some kind of metric to come up with what are acceptable square footages. It's it's a tough challenge because there's, there's no, there's no one out there in the world saying that this is what a, this is what 18 kids. Must have in order to be a functional classroom. There's, there's no one out there saying that. State of Connecticut does throw some guidelines as far as how to create spaces. And and if you do some quick math, you 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 start to find out that that there's a, that there is a. A multiplier that that if you take a current number of students and 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 what they require, what they. Say is a guideline for class size, you can. Start to find out what that multiplier is and and we use that then to interpolate. How we can come up with classroom sizes. So for the low end, what the range would be. For for low end. What the range would be for high end or or optimal and and high end. And those are reflective of what you have. We we did a check at Ox Ridge and we did a check at Tokinik. And those are reflective in in those numbers, the 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 optimal size. Is pretty much achieved at. Each of these schools. And, you know, I think we found one exception to that rule when we were looking at it. I think there was a, there was a third grade classroom at Tokinik that. Is is outside the norm, but everything else would fit between the bottom of the low end to the top of the high end range. So, a- all that being said, I think it's it's. We have some ranges and we use that range to then study, what do you have at Hinley right now? What do you have at Royal right now? What do you have at at Holmes right now? We did take a look at overall student population and we looked at the eight year projections, the enrollment projections that are are are. Available through the through the. To the, to the, to the schools and just to see if there were any significant anomalies that that might impact. How we need to look at those classroom counts. But but for the most part, you you'll see these tables organized in a way that. That each school is broken out by kindergarten, first grade. Second and third grade, fourth and fifth grade. We look at the low end, the optimal and the high end for for each of them, based on the the district's student counts. And then the square foot ranges and then the required number of classrooms based on current utilization. So then we look at that, compare that to current. So in other words, kindergarten through first grade at Hinley. Currently requires seven rooms. Currently requires seven rooms. One is within the optimal range of 817 to 1,008 square feet. Five are in the lower, the low end range. And one is below the low of the low end range. So that's what, that's when we see below here, when we see this column below. That's where a classroom. Is below this 774 square feet for kindergarten through first grade. Or in the case of second and third grade, it's below 779 and for. Fourth and fifth grade, it's below 760. So, but you see that once you get up into the second and third grades and fourth and fifth grades, you, most of your rooms then start. Coming in, in the optimal size range. So I mean, that's, that's a good, a good indicator as well. And then. What this, what this starts to tell us here overall is that. A school like Royal. You see where the problem area is with a school like Royal that the. Right now, the fourth and fifth grades, there's eight required sections, eight required classrooms. Only one is in the optimal range of 777 to 851. Seven of them are below 760 square feet. Now, that being said, if you do some quick math, you'll find out that. Royals' class sizes are lower than, than the average class size at Royal is pretty small right now, but. But. It also has the highest range. Looking at it, you have 358 students. And you, over the next eight years, the high end of the range is 393 based on the enrollment projections. So. So the problem would be exacerbated at a school like Royal should the population trends continue and. And you get into a situation where you have. Where you need to have 22, 23, 24 students in a fourth and fifth grade classroom. In rooms that are below 760 square feet is a, is a big challenge. So that's what the table reveals. It just puts the information forward that. That, you know, Hindley has, Hindley has a couple of classrooms within each, within each grade range that. Fall short of the area requirements or the, what we're calling kind of this. Low, low end, small size. Royal has the, has the challenge of the fourth and fifth grade classrooms. Holmes has. Some challenges. They actually have a, one classroom over the current need for kindergarten and grade one. One of the third grade classrooms, I think, falls below the 779. And then fourth and fifth grade, there's a couple that fall below the 760. And just to quickly, I want to quickly shift to the summary that was done for this. Just use that as part of the conclusion. The share button, alright. So scrolling through, taking a look. The greatest needs appear to be at Royal grades three through five, generally located on the second or upper floor of the oldest portion of the building. That's where we have the seven. Classrooms at grades four through five. Needs at Hindley are more distributed among the various grade levels. Generally, still, they are on the second or upper floor of the oldest portion of the building. At Holmes, the needs of the younger grade levels balance between grades kindergarten through third grade. That's where we had the surplus of one, but the deficiency of one other. So that would leave two. Two below minimum classrooms for grades four and five. Not surprisingly, second floor, upper floor of the building and the oldest portion. You know, projections, we did take a look again at Royal sees largest fluctuation in students. So that's where. Lowest enrollment over the next eight years, classroom count requirements will improve, but at most it would alleviate the need for two upper, upper elementary level classrooms. At the highest anticipated enrollment classroom crowding at the classroom. Crowding at the upper elementary level will continue to be an issue. You know, Hindley and Holmes don't have a pronounced need. That gets exacerbated over the next eight years. Their numbers are much tighter. You know, the high and low overall student enrollment at Hindley and Holmes are. Much tighter over the next eight years. So. That's, you know, the only thing that would, I think, really wrap this up is that we would do a plan showing exactly which, you know, which are the seven classrooms that are the smaller size. At Royal. And that would, that would pretty much put a. Wrap up the, the analysis portion of this study.
Thank you. Any board comments or questions?
Are any of the. Classrooms in the, the plan that you presented in the previous agenda item accounted for in this study? Or are all of these. Undersized classrooms a separate issue?
I think, yes. So the answer is yes. There are classrooms. That, so for example. When. The, the two new classrooms at Hindley. That are part of the addition while we're, we're calling them new classrooms. They inherently would have World Language and the Idea Lab. Placed in some of the smaller classrooms that are currently existing. So. So those class, those classroom sizes can be smaller. As opposed to the general classrooms. So the plan, so for example, you can just, by looking at the plan alone.
So John, could I, could I interrupt, John?
Yes.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Jill, the question is, the graph that we're looking at right now, that is our existing schools and our existing classrooms.
Correct.
Okay. Alright, is that the question you wanted answered? And then.
And then, and then from there, how many, thank you, how many of those would be redressed? If we move forward with, so would we eliminate some of these?
So I think the ask would be, and you might, I don't think you have it right now. Maybe it goes to facilities work. What does that graph look like with the work done on these schools? Understood?
Right, yes, that is understood. I would have to, I think that would be the next step is to, is to put that together, but I think. The, to put the graph together, but I, I'm just giving an example that at Hindley. You would alleviate two of those classrooms. Alleviate two of the classroom size issues by repurposing smaller classrooms for other uses.
No, understood. Mrs. Parent?
So, thank you. I'm building off of Jill's question. I think this goes to the scope question. And to be perfectly honest, I'm not quite sure why this study was asked for. Whether it's in conjunction with the removal of the portables or not, but if. I would like to hear the administration's opinion as to whether, you know, when we look at. Hindley and Royal, is this something that we need to consider? And is this a priority of the administration? But if we're doing renovation or an addition, do we need to incorporate this study into it as well and fix it all at the same time? Or is this an additional situation?
So, Mr. Green, a point of order?
Yes.
When did the board order this work? Because I think we're now, this is exactly how you get scope creep. I'm unaware that the Board of Education ordered this work.
Yeah. Dr. Adley? Can you answer Tara's question as to when and how this work was ordered?
So this came, this came through as a request from the Facilities Committee.
The facilities doesn't order work? And I think that we may want to pause on this until the board has a chance to. Digest this and decide if this is board work, because I think what you're about to find is scope creep and we might. Determine in our future conversations that this is exactly where we go. And John, this is not towards you, it's excellent work. But this is how you get scope creep, because committees don't order work, they come back.
Thank you, Mrs. Doc. And I think the direction the questions are going in are good questions, but let's go back and look at the information. Maybe it's also work that goes back to the Facilities Committee to incorporate it into the, the bigger picture and conversations with the administration.
Well, just to be, just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, in order to answer the question for the, for the Facilities Committee, we had, we had to get the work done. I couldn't answer it any other way.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Seeny?
So, sitting on the Facilities Committee but not being at that meeting that this was discussed. So the board wants us to utilize this in our next discussion as one of the inputs that set the priorities as Ms. Parent asked.
I think the work's been done. I think it's good work. I think it'll play into the overall conversation that we had about looking at the big picture. So we, further conversation around it? Mr. Brown?
Just so I consider properly, John, when I, pardon me. When I look at the plan we discussed earlier tonight and I look at these numbers here. They're not integrated. There's no connection, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other board questions or comments, Mrs. Ritchie?
Well, I guess. This, I feel like this is a, while it wasn't work that the board asked, it's important work. So I would like to know, are we pushing it back down to facilities? What, how, what is the board's direction to facilities right now regarding this particular study? Are we telling them to incorporate it into the overall?
It's open for discussion. Personally, I think it should be incorporated into the facilities work. The work's been done. We should take our time to look at it. Digest it and it should be part of the conversation of the Facilities Committee.
Dr. Adley, is the administration bringing forward a request to size all classroom spaces in the district? That's what we need. I mean, that's what facilities need to consider. Is the administration coming forward saying one of the goals is to have similarly sized classrooms throughout the district?
I guess the question, what was the, what was your goal of asking for this work?
Well, maybe Dennis.
I think the goal, the goal of this was that we don't want to repeat that you go back and rebuild portables in 10 years because you have too small of classrooms. So the thought is. How, how are classroom staff in order to fix the school? This. To us was the bigger picture of this holistic part that we were talking about before is that if you're going to do an addition, your classrooms are too small, you're just, you're not, you're not looking at the entire school at once. Need to look at the school, the classrooms and the whole picture and not just look at. Adding, adding extra classrooms and if our existing classrooms are too small to be usable.
I mean, all a perfect thought process, but I think the one thing out of this is. Those subcommittees cannot order work. That doesn't come up through the board.
So the question, I think, is Dennis, if that's the goal and John, if what you're putting forward, your classrooms will be sized to the state educational standards. But now it looks like again, and there's nothing wrong, and I do think there's good work here, but again, we have to give facilities some guidance. Are we now saying? Great, add on classrooms to get rid of portables, but by the way, could you also please go look at our second floors and our first grades and our this? And talk about additional work because we want to upsize all classrooms to some. Standard, like I see some language in here about Darien Public Schools class size standards. I don't know what those are. So I think we have to have a board and I think it has to come from the administration or from facilities. But that's why it's generally good to bring it back to the board to flush out, figure out. Why we're having the work done and what we're doing with it, because I think we've, we've just increased scope again. That's not a bad thing, but we have to know that's what we did. So that facilities doesn't have it around.
Thank you, Mrs. Ad. Mrs. McKenna?
Leaving aside the procedural questions, which I understand, I think my understanding was the reason that this. Work was requested was so that we would understand what the minimum number of classrooms were so that we knew that when we built, we were hitting. The right number of classrooms. We didn't just build three, three, replace the three portables, but be short five classrooms. So I think typically when you do this kind of capacity study, if I compare it to what KGND did. You know, that you would typically look at. Square footage, although I do think the question of do we have enough classrooms is different from the question, question of are they the right size? So I think we want to make sure we have a minimum number first.
Thank you, Mrs. McKenna.
I was gonna say, as a members of the, as a member of the Facilities Committee, now that I've seen this work. I don't know that I could go forward with any plan that doesn't incorporate this work. You know, if you're gonna, to the point of doing it right and doing it right once. However, the study can be, it's here and I think that does expand our scope and that we should definitely figure out that's what we're going to.
I would just say that, like we did with Ox Ridge when we built the ed specs, we were short and we were. Conscious of making sure whatever the new standards are, for instance, bathrooms in kindergartens were put in the ed specs. To the extent this informs us of the correct square footage, if we already put in addition on, I think like Ox Ridge, that will happen. The genie is sort of out of the bottle in terms of this is now a public document. And I do think we need to be mindful of how work is ordered because this has really taken us outside of our scope.
So my thought is that this should go back to the administration and get on another agenda for further discussion by the board as. Further discussion by the board through the administration as to what the goal is from an administration standpoint with this work that's been done.
Right, so is the administration now supporting the addition of rights, you know, increasing?
Well, that's what I think, I think that's what the administration has to come back to us and say.
We, we have that in the master plan as a goal, the right sizing of educational spaces. So I think it's just a function of where it falls in the priority list. I guess, I think if we, if we go back to reconciling against how many classrooms we solve for in what we're looking at today. Then we'll know what the delta is and we can decide how to prioritize on anything else.
Mr. Seeny?
That's why I asked the question, I guess, when we're here. My last comment would be called out. I mean, it's very clear, there's a red in the summary, you know, Royal, so as a building. Whenever there's building committee or even as the. Facilities Committee, we're certainly now gonna look probably at Royal and ensure that maybe that we can reconcile. The other two schools might not be a priority. We gotta figure that out as a board and as an administration to fix these two. Grade four to five at Holmes and Hindley's got, I guess, five.
So I don't think the work should stop because it's good work that's been done, but I think the administration has to take the work, work with the, commit with the facilities subcommittee as to how the work is going to be used or incorporated and come back and report to the board.
Setting priorities of these projects, not only by project, but within the project.
Right. Alright, good. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, John.
John, thank you very much.
Sorry, thank you. Thank you very much. No, it's a pleasure to work with you all and to hear the input. I think it's absolutely valuable and great to meet you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, you too.
Presentation of updated five-year capital plan, Mr. Roodel and Mr. Lynch.
Okay, good evening. I'll start off like I do every year, giving an update of where we are with this year capital projects, which. It was only five projects. One was the rebuilding the tennis courts at the high school. That project's completed. Millsix Middle School, security camera upgrade. Contractor has been let. We've gotten a new. He started laying out his wiring runs, et cetera. We have a diagram where all the cameras are gonna go. So that's done. Tokenik School upgraded fire panel, that was done in August. Replacing the 2004 Trailblazer. We were originally going to get a Suburban and then we decided to get a. A three-quarter ton van instead. We saved $19,000. And then the lockdown system enhancement, we've just received the proposal and we haven't gone over it yet. So that's where we are with those projects. And. This is the. Low-range capital plan for this year. As you can see, the priority rubric remains the same as it has. Since long before I came here. As far as. How these get priority ranked, generally, projects which are priority one. In the, the budget year we're working on are the ones that get. Brought forward to the Board of Finance and the RTM. The next. The next page. It's a small. Thing, these are like the questions we, we ask to decide if something is a priority one to two or three. And then, and it goes hand in hand with the rubric. And. Then on the next page, I start with the description of the individual projects. This is like the real thumbnail. There's another description that we do that was. This is like the real thumbnail. There's another description that we do that was requested years ago by the RTM where there's a series of six questions asked on a project along with the pricing of it. We have that also. That's not in this presentation, but we do have it. So I'm sure it'll get distributed out to the board soon.
And usually it's in the budget book.
It is in the budget book, yeah. So these are the individual descriptions of the projects, broken down by building. Obviously, there are no projects planned for Oxford School. And then we go forward a couple of pages, we'll get to the first grid with, there you go, right there with the high school. Thank you. That, I just want to say that it, it might seem to some people looking at it, but there's, there's nothing here that can't be a standalone project. You know, whether it's the HVAC system at Holmes or it's a roof at Hindley or homeschool, they're not going to be impacted negatively by anything that the board chooses to do as far as the removing of the portables project. They may end up being folded into those projects, but they can also be done standalone. So the priority one items for the high school is the new carpet in the library, where we place the surface in the south gym. These, these floors generally last, you know, anywhere between 12 and 18 years on a gymnasium and then they have to be, you just redo the top surfacing of your, you rip off the top surfacing and put down a new synthetic surfacing. The next time there's adding glycol to the heating system, we've done this at Tokenik was built this way. We did this at Middlesex a couple of years ago because we had some some savings in fuel oil money. And so we, we put glycol in its system because we were freezing coils. And we don't have it in the system at the high school. And it, it it, it doesn't make the heating system work more efficiently. What it's, it's anti-please. It keeps, keeps stuff from breaking. And then the, the next item is the supplying of stall storage buildings for a baseball and track. This is kind of an all shoot-up, but study we did for the facilities committee on storage facilities at the high school. And there were, there were two that kind of stuck out as being pretty pretty, pretty big eyesores just because of where they were located in relation to, you could see one from the road. You can see another one from many different parts of the school property. So the way I've done this in the past is I've just gone through all the buildings and then we'll take questions. That's good with everybody. Okay. Middlesex Middle School, same thing, new carpet in the library. This is also something that was deferred from last year. The next item, it's, it it's new. We have a transformer. It's in a closet in, in a wood shop and it's humming and buzzing and it's, it's almost to the point where it's a distraction that the teacher can't teach. And it's, it's loud. You can hear this thing in the hallway and we had it looked at. It's going bad. It's not any safety issue. But we tried repairing it and doing what we could and we can get through the year, but we do have to replace it. Repaved the access rotor on the rear of the building. This is another item that was deferred from last year. And overhaul the air conditioning units in the library and the offices. This is a one this year. We did have a scare over the summer. We had some issues with, we had a power outage in July and we blew some parts in that unit and it took a while to get them in and the people in the building were, well, they weren't very happy with me. I'll just say that. Hindley School, the project is a curb sidewalk and a blacktop replacement in the bus loop in front of the building. Next priority one is to provide emergency lighting at each of the egress doors. We plan to do this by putting in LED exit light fixtures that have a battery and emergency lights built into them. Seems to be the most cost-effective way to do it. Provide a wireless clock system in the building. We have, we put the wireless clock systems in at the middle school and the high school and they work great. Holmes Elementary School, there's money in the budget to design the HVAC system for the original building. We also have been to provide the emergency lighting similar to Hindley School and provide the wireless clock system. I do have as a priority one, construction of new HVAC system and converting from steam heat to hot water. It, it's a one, even though it's out in the next year. It, it is a, it is a high priority item. There's no good. Royal School, we have providing wireless clock system, emergency lighting, same as the other building, and a new roof on the 1996 edition and the original building. These roofs are starting to to get pretty bad. I did not include in this project, the potential four classrooms that would be replaced or the library. There, there, that square footage is not included in this. And usually these projects, when, when you go through the, the state process for getting your approval, et cetera, this project, it's like Hindley and Holmes, we started them two years ago. We're bidding that work out this January. So, so this is the type of work that may fold into the expansion and, and library reimagine at that building. The central office, they just have to pave the front parking lot and the entrance road. We did the back a few years ago. And it's time to do the front now. With all our paving projects like this, the loop road at Hindley, we, we tie in to the town of Darien's blacktopping budget. They have, not budget, their bid. And we use their vendor at the large volume discount price that they get. And the guy just slides us in his schedule and we end up, it saves the town a lot of money and they're usually good vendors. Jed Powell and Darren, they do a good job of vetting these vendors. So we, we haven't had an issue with whoever we've used. Security camera in this building. We don't have one. We do have a burglar alarm system, but we, we, we need, this is the only building we have that doesn't have a security camera. There's, there's even one down at the maintenance shop. And renovate the basement into a copy center. This is, this is, the copy center is that room behind the big screen up there. It's not big enough to service everything they have. They got to buy the paper piecemeal. They can't, there's some bulk work they can't do. It's hard to get in and out when there's meetings going on or they're doing assessment of a student in here. So we did have this, this number comes from a firm came in and did a, an assessment and presented a couple of options to us. And this was the most practical option. District-wide, we're just pretty much continuing the vehicle replacement plan. This truck number forty-two, I, I deferred it in, in, in 2019 and, and it was deferred this year. So this truck needs to go this year. It's been deferred enough. The second item there is, we, we have blueprints. I have them in a credenza in my office. There, there's some in the basement of the town hall. There's a couple, there's a lot of them in a room at the ledge road. The town has digitized a lot of their records and they're very happy with the job. My other school district I was at before, we digitized everything. And then I only digitize your records. They take your paper records and organize them in a coherent manner and they get rid of all the doubles and triples and, and pages that were changed out by a, a change order. And so you end up, even your paper is streamlined, but then you got everything easily accessible. And then I had a third Suburban for out-of-district transportation that it's just an expansion of the in-house transportation that we started back around four or five years ago. Were there any questions?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. The only thing I would throw out there, Mr. Lynch and Dr. Adley, is there's a long history here as to control of the basement. And many things have been proposed to, for downstairs there. So I think that has to be coordinated through town hall as to.
I think they have had discussions. I'm, as Dr. Adley noted, I feel like we did your discussion about.
Yes, yeah, yes. We, we've had some discussions and that they'd be open to that concept.
Okay. Mrs. Ritchie?
Thank you for this, Mike. Just, I have probably a question on every school. I'm sorry, but for the repair, the track, the 200,000 that you have is a, it's a priority two. So you don't, you don't see putting that forward for DHS for this year? Or is that something that you could push out a year?
I, I think we can push it out a year. That's really resurfacing the track and, and doing a little more in-depth repair before we resurface it. Well, we, we, that, that doesn't have to be done this summer.
Okay. And so.
Go ahead.
I can just keep going. So I, I did have a question about the air conditioning. It sounds like there was an issue. So that, that wasn't something, that was a three. And now clearly it sounds like because you had some issues over the summer, we need to change that to a one.
Yeah, it was harder to get parts than I expected it was going to be.
Okay.
And it's just.
And then for Hindley, I, it was the replace the boilers. Can't find it on here. It looks like that. And I don't think it's a priority one. No, it is a priority one. Nope. I don't think it's a priority one. Can't find it on here. Sorry. It's a two. But I saw, I see that the, the, I guess it's in fiscal year 23, the cost of that went up pretty significantly. I know that's not something that we're looking at this year, but maybe you could just briefly tell us why the cost was 500,000 last year. So why are we seeing such a jump in that? Is that scope?
There, there's several reasons. One was the added in with the, with this is converting to hot water heat. The other plan, if you looked at the, the five-year plan, there were different line items. Convert to hot water heat, change out all piping to hot water heat, change, add new pumps. It was all different item numbered.
Okay.
And so we added them all together.
Got it.
And then I had a guy come out and, and look at him with the possible eye towards using the fact that we have gas in the building, going, condensing boilers and getting a discount and maybe even getting the, you know, through the state, they, they have that green fund.
Right.
Getting, getting them to pay for some of the, the construction and design work.
Okay. And that's for next year. It's a priority, you have it as a priority two. So you, you see that coming as a priority one for next year?
I would say yes.
And then I just, the royal roof, that is a new, were we having issues over at Royal except we, I didn't see that in last year?
We, we, we are having issues. The roof on the original part of the building is, was done at the same time that the roof at Hindley that we're changing was done. So we have an issue with that. We changed out a lot of work. We've done a lot of masonry repairs on the parapets and stuff like that at that original part of the building.
Okay.
Not, not really the gym or the common room. That part of the roof seems to be holding up all right. This is the, the roof over the classroom section of the old building and the roof over the 1996 section, you know, that runs across the front of Royal.
Right. Sure. I know that. So that's, that is something you did mention that could be incorporated into the, the portable project.
It could be, but it won't be impacted.
So we could do, we could do the roof and it
Totally standalone.
Get touched by the portable.
That's correct. Yeah, you're not going to, you're not going to destroy anything on it by building.
Okay.
Mrs. Dine?
I'm, I'm going to make the same comment I made last year, which is when you look at our five-year plan, last year we looked and this year was supposed to be almost eight million dollars and next year would be five. We've sort of pushed stuff into next year. We're at less than half of that at three, five, including priority ones and threes. And then we have a bubble of nine million next year. I would love to see us take a closer look at things we can accelerate. For instance, at the high school, why not do both gyms at the same time, north and south? The motorized shades in the library, those were supposed to be a priority one this year. And now we've pushed those off three years. I just think we should look at balancing these projects so that we have a consistency over years rather than highs and lows. So to the extent that we could do that.
I, I tried. I, I knew, you know, because there's a four-point-something million at home. And, and that was going to, whatever year I put it in, it was going to blow that year right out of the water. And so I, I knew, I knew, you know, it was, it was going to be noted. And, and I just, I, I mean, I can't hide it. There's no way to put.
No, absolutely. I don't want you to hide it.
I mean, I do. Look, absolutely.
But I do think there are little things like the gyms, doing both gyms at the high school.
And I thought about that, honestly. And, and in situations like that, there's summer programs, like summer school, there's camps, there's, you know, I, I'm sure like, you know, say the economy of scale, when the DAF redid those central fields, they, they had a lot of fields out of service. And it was quite a strain.
Right.
And I mean, it was a wonderful thing, but it was a strain at the same time. And, and these, the south gym is in worse shape than, than north gym. I don't know why. But you know, so it was like, I, I can do, I can do one and let the other one slide. And so that's what I tried to do. Like with this building, I didn't want to try to blacktop the whole parking lot and, and, and shut the place down for a week. So we did half. A couple of years later, we do the other half. That way we can keep functioning. But, okay.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you. I noticed on here we have the 800,000 for a security booth at the high school. I know that came out towards the end of the old administration. Is that just floating around as a legacy issue or is that a current ask or just wondering how that reappeared?
Well, it, it, it's not really that it reappeared. It just didn't disappear.
There you go. You're correct. You said it better.
And, you know, really it's a matter of if the board decides that's not a priority, it will disappear.
Okay. It just also, I was looking at the copy center relocation to the basement. And I know we had a discussion maybe two winters ago, we were going through the budget about the copying budget in general and did you guys, do we need to print as much as you're printing? Now that we have with the hybrid, the online, I guess I would just question why that's on there as a party one. And as a follow-up to that, I know we have the synergies with IT and the town. Are there any synergies? Does the town have an ask for this? Is this something we use as a shared service and charge for? I don't know if that's part of this consideration, but I, I just am curious of the, the need for more copying these days versus less.
So copying.
Go ahead, Eric. Go ahead.
So copying in general this year is down about 20% when we look at usage year over year. A product of that is that we do have more devices and kit hands. We do have hyper schedules and remote schedules. This is more a function of where the actual copy center is located as a, as opposed to the actual usage of the copy center.
So it's not an expansion. It's just, it's like, it's in a bad spot?
It's in a bad spot.
Okay. And then will anyone else be taking advantage of this or can we bill anyone else for using it too?
I'll leave that to Alan.
Hang on. Will anybody else be using it?
I just think of the model we have with the IT and, you know, the town itself uses our resources there. Is, is this something where there's similar overlap we could consider or no?
I would, listen, I would always be open for, for collaboration on any project. If, if there's room for, for sharing in some capacity, I'd be open to listen to that.
Thank you.
But it's also sort of part of the budget process. You'll see it come up in the sense we may or may not be making some decisions about hired staff and so on.
Understood. Thank you.
Mrs. Ackman?
Mr. Lynch, you mentioned that the HVAC system at Holmes, you do have it as a priority one. Any reason you pushed it out to 22, 23?
Um.
Other than the price tag?
No, we have to do, we have to get a complete set of plans and, and. No, we have to do, we have to get a complete set of plans and then we have to go through the approval process.
So you just need time.
With the, yeah, we just need the time.
Okay. Thank you.
We won't need that money and because of the size, it's probably going to be bonded.
Yeah.
So it's out.
Mr. Seeny?
Sorry, just going back to the Henley gym, you said this, that could be pushed out if, you know, again, we were talking about doing expanded scope of renovations there. So that, could that be pushed out until we decide what we're doing on that property?
The Henley Gym?
Henley Elementary School, new roof on gym.
Oh, new air handling units with coils for the gym and for the cafeteria. These are, these are the ventilation units for that space. They're original equipment to the building. And they're, they're okay, but they're, it can definitely be improved, but.
Sorry, I'm looking at $850,000 new roof on gym party two.
Well, but that's a two. So unless we made it a one, it wouldn't hit the budget.
Or next, would it go next year?
Oh, the roof on the gym.
I'm just, I'm wondering like where, where, how long it could be pushed out is my question.
But I think those are the exact points that need to be taken into the conversation with the facility subcommittee and look at these line items.
Yeah. So right now that's not, unless the board decides to make it a one and do it, it's not going to get done.
No, I think what Mr. Seeny is saying is though, if it's going to become a one next year, the conversation should happen now. Right?
Just trying to understand when it needs to be done. I know it's a priority two, but it's got to be done within a certain timeframe.
But I think that it's, sorry, if the, the portable closets will be, the space in the gym would still be there. We're not knocking that gym down. So the roof would still be necessary.
Exactly. The roof would be the roof. The the 76 edition this refers to is the little classrooms between like the nurse and then the, the common room. There's a small little area there. Three classrooms and some bathrooms, not the library.
So my original question, how long can you push that out? The new roof on gym, common rooms, 1976 and 1996 additions?
Each year I can push, you know, I assess it like, like, so it, it didn't move from a two to a one this year. It stayed at two because the roof's not showing any leaks. So, you know, we'll assess it again during the year like we always do. And then when we come to make the capital, it could go out another year. I would say off the top of my head, if things last, if things go good, you could push it out another three, four years.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I think we'll continue. This will come back to us as we go through the budget cycle, kind of a first look at and review. So good questions. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Lynch.
Okay. Thank you. Thanksgiving, everybody.
Two. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Next item, discussion on October 2020, 2021 financial report and possible action on proposed budget transfers. This was all reviewed at the finance committee meeting. Mr. Roodel.
So this is the financial report through October. We are forecasting a deficit of just $2 million at $2,9,655 or 1.96% of the budget. As you can see, the general education RCs are forecasting a positive $252,000 with special education RCs a positive $235,000. And then obviously the reopening expenditures of just shy of 2.5 million, which is really what's driving deficit. We do have a breakdown of the COVID-related expenditures in total spending, including grants. It's about $3.3 million. We have $482,000 of grants, all of which have been received as of today. For 482,000, there were transfers for 364,000 and that brings us down to the $2.4 million. We did want to include a bridge from previous month to this month in terms of what changed within the reopening expenditures. So last month, as Dr. Adley mentioned, we were about 2.3 million. We did have some turnover in the part-time custodians, which reduces the forecast by about 22,000. The timing in which the additional campus monitors were hired related in salary savings of just under 21,000. The timing of hiring the additional technicians is about 50,000. We have trued up the elections for those individual staff members' health insurance. And that brings it down by about 41,000. We have added in custodial overtime, which previously was a to be determined for about $70,000. The nurse, including nurse stipend was added for 20,000. We have added substitute coverage for 49,000, which was a previous to be determined. Police coverage at Middlesex increased. We did add police throughout the month of October due to traffic concerns, and that was about 17,000. A small difference in technology. And then the big drivers is we did add anticipated expenditures for boys swimming at the YMCA. And then gymnastics, assuming that our buildings remain closed due rentals. And then as you'll see, we do have transfers totaling just over $49,000 to be approved to bring it down to that $2.4 million. Salaries are negative overall by about $789,000. Rental custodial overtime is positive by 13,000. That is because we are not renting out our facilities. Interns are a positive 8,800. Similar to the previous month, the weight room is currently not being used, so $6,000 positive there. We have some clubs and councils that are not running, so it's about 5,000. Intermeurols are not running and we're forecasting that for the, the fall season for 35,000. Salary savings and turnover are positive 234. We have some savings and contract support due to favorable non-certified staff of 82,000. And then salaries for reopening costs are that $1.1 million in the negative. Moving to operating, that is also in the negative by $887,000. Repairs for IT technology is forecasted at 11,000. We do have a transfer for that tonight as well. Teaching supplies in the high school are a positive $10,000 and this is really due to labs. Not using as much material is due to the change in schedules. Other student activities a positive 7,000. We are not planning on the China exchange trip this year. Leaving that positive balance. Lack of field trips for music is a positive 7,000. Special education tuition is running favorably by about 200,000. Special education transportation is also running favorably by about $60,000. And then reopening expenditures again are really what's driving the negative balance. And that's a negative 1.1 million. And then adult ed is $4,500 to the positive and then dues and fees, a small amount of $65. Fixed is also running negative. That is 14,260 to the negative. We do have some savings in transportation. We are not running the late bus at the middle school. As clubs are not running, we have some positive balances in property insurance, workers' comp insurance and student extra insurance. As we flagged last month, we do have a negative forecast for unemployment insurance of 60,000. And then utilities are slightly positive at 12,000. Equipment is also negative at 155,000. And again, that is the reopening expenditures. Revenue is also negative. We are not renting out our facilities, as I mentioned, so it's a anticipated loss of revenue of just over 42,000. That is largely made up by additional field rental revenue, which was generated during the summer to the virtual DSS. Summer school is slightly positive 2,000. We have updated our excess cost forecast. We are forecasting about $99,000 shortfall there. This is a product of a lower reimbursement rate, assumed at 67 and a half percent. Coupled with a lower threshold of four and, or four and a half multiple at about 96,000, which is to our positive. And as we mentioned earlier, we are forecasting less expenses in tuition and transportation. Those less expenses mean less reimbursement. And then we have less ELP tuition forecasted to shy of $90,000 as we have less students. So we do have five transfers for approval for our COVID-related. We are recommending moving $6,295 to resource materials to cover music materials and that savings is coming from the music transportation we talked about earlier. $8,840 to cover the cost of sanitizing the buses. And this is coming from the savings from not running the late buses at the middle school. $20,000 to cover the stipend for the COVID compliance liaison. And that is coming from salary savings from secretary contract. 14,243 to cover the point two FTE nurse that was added. And this is coming from the savings from the nurse contract as well as the secretary contract. And then the one item that is not really COVID-related is $11,000 for additional repairs to Chromebooks. And those funds are coming from savings within turnover.
Thank you, Mr. Roodel. Any board questions or comments? Mrs. Ritchie?
Just to follow up on the why, the, we had talked about at the finance committee, that the boys swimming and gymnastics season is now going to be an abbreviated season. So we had asked, could we get an update from the why in terms of the facility's cost due to the shortened season?
So we're still waiting to hear back about any updates, but we'll have that hopefully for the December report.
Okay. And then also there should be some additional savings due to athletics being put on hold as well.
So we are, I am actually discussing this with Chris. We probably will update some of our expenses, whether it is sports officials, transportation for some of those fall seasons as well as future sports.
Great. Thank you.
Any additional board questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Roodel. May I have a motion to approve the proposed October transfers as outlined in the memorandum dated November 11th, 2020? Motion, Mrs. Stein, second, Mrs. Ackman, all in favor. That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Roodel. Next, update on 2021, 2022 budget. Dr. Adley?
So this is an opportunity. If Mr. Tremberg would put up the slide for me, this is an opportunity that the board had shared last year with me that if there are things in the budget that maybe new to put those on the table early if we can, as opposed to just putting them, roll them out at the budget time. So this is actually earlier than we were planned because it was, this is actually planned for December 8th. But we're moving it forward a little bit. So with that, I'm sure some of the budget initiatives are some things that are on the table at the moment. I don't want the board to take any conclusions from this, that this is definitely in. Of course, it's always a board budget, but from a minister presentation of the budget, first of all, that, that these are the priority orders, order. One thing can't switch for another. Something new may come on in this because, I mean, the budget is, is a work in progress, as you know, through February. So we're well into the process, but we're still a lot of decisions to make. But at this point, I'm just flagging a couple of things. Just to give you a wee sense of what our thinking might be like. So the first one is just the Chromebooks, K to two, could be Chromebooks or it could be tablets to support the one-on-one. In many ways, that need has just been thrust upon us. We're in that one-on-one environment. We ordinarily would not be purchasing all of these Chromebooks or a tablet for the, the younger student and it'd be in the classrooms. But life has thrown us at, and I don't think there's any turning, turning back on it. I think we have to just complete it with that, that purchase. We were actually lucky this year that we were able to recondition some computers, get some additional ones just to make that, that work. The open choice is a, is a, is a complete new concept. This is a open choice probably 30 years ago. 25 years ago was called Project Choice. So essentially it was a program established and supported by the Connecticut State Department of Education and been established by legislation. The intent of the program is really to reduce racial, ethnic and economic isolation. And actually we have to write to the board or to the state department every year with our efforts of how we are reducing racial, ethnic and economic isolation. That's, that's something we actually have to submit. So I'll say that this open choice comes under the umbrella of diversity, diversity and, and the recognition and, and embracement of diversity. We face our own challenges, has come up both in my superintendent's entry plan. It's come up throughout the year. It's coming up through the board values and goals. You know, and I think just at some point I'm a big believer, honestly, and we can talk about things all you like. We can wait for years for training to get things done. But occasionally there are opportunities of actions of policies, practices that actually change things. So this is, this is the entry into this. Essentially, the way this works is you would receive minority students. Currently Bridgeport, Hartford, New Haven are, are the school districts that actually participate in it. Currently, Darien, New Kane and Weldon West and Westport would be looking either for, for Bridgeport or looking for the possibility of Norwalk to participate as a sending district. And essentially what would happen, you can take, receive students from a sending district at any grade level. It would be my recommendation that having actually lived this program to some degree, it's most successful when, when you receive the students at the youngest age level and you work with them. As Darien students right from, from kindergarten. This is an exciting opportunity to do what's right for our students and recognizing and celebrating diversely and also doing what's right for, for, in many ways, other students from other areas. We all always talk about regionalization and that the, not be forced to be regionalized. This is an opportunity for us to participate on a mutually inclusive goals together. So essentially you would, you would take some, if you're asking a recommendation, I would recommend taking students in kindergarten where they would not trip, potentially trip a class. Typically there is tuition that follows. It's not, it's not dollar for dollar by any means. In this case, it's, it's $3,000, $3,000 a student plus transportation. So basically you'd be taking depending 10 to 10 to 15, 18 students if depending on, on the space. So that's, that's obviously a new concept for us and it's one I'd be excited about. There, I will say that there's no guarantee that we will be able to participate. A, there's a limit of transportation from Bridgeport and they're still working on the opportunity with Norwalk. And it sounds encouraging. There are other districts, as I say, as New Haven or sorry, New Kane is the one are, are, are also interested in partnering with that. CES is working on it. That's a possibility. So I just, once we start working on things as possibility, they're exploring them. I certainly want the board to know that those discussions are, are starting. And the second, the third bullet there is teacher and residence program that is, that is a program run by CREG, Capital Region Educational Council, which is her part of the partnership with CES. And essentially this is an opportunity. Marge goes to all sorts of job fairs and so on and so forth. And this is an opportunity to have minority candidates actually join us. This, this could include one or two minority candidates. And essentially the minority candidate, this is a way for them to get an alternate route to certification. They need a bachelor's to get in and they would take, I think it's up to 18 credits or courses or 18 months. And a full year in, in this case, it would be in the school system, working with the master teacher. And so if you had two teachers, you would have two of them working with a master teacher thereafter, after the year, if there's a job open, they're guaranteed a place. And the thought process is you, you train them onsite with a master teacher. And the support is there and they want to stay and will stay. They have to make that commitment to stay because they're getting free tuition in order to actually get their certification. Fourth one is, you know, I can see that, as you said, administrators, it really reads the wrong way. It should be administrators, assess facilitators. That's really the way it should read. It says assess facilitators as administrators. As you know, we have assess facilitators in each of the elementary schools. We also have assistant principals with the assess facilitators because it's, it's either the assistant principal or the principal. It's required that we have an administrator at the table. This changes the administrators, sorry, it changes the assess facilitator into an administrator, essentially an assistant principal for, would take over and assume the assess facilitation, which is really just a more efficient way of, of doing business. And actually I said it would be a bigger bang for the buck than doing business. It also doesn't require two people to be sitting and tied up in PPTs, which is, that's a significant amount of time. The person who's actually there is also has an ability to, to do just some decision-making and follow through with, with what comes out of the PPT and make some informed decisions. They can also, they also have really a sort of 360-degree look at at what's going on in terms of SRBI, in terms of the, the student's complete program. They understand how school improvement fits into the whole thing. So they, they bring the, the full picture to the, to the PPT table. So this is an improvement that I think would be more efficient. Yes, it's, it costs slightly. Yes, it costs slightly a bit more, but I think the trade-off is well worth it. All right, the master plan survey that we talked about, the KGND study, it expires sort of, so to speak, in December. It's not really a big initiative, but it's, it's a $200,000 potential expenditure, so what's on. The technology technicians, COVID, you know, COVID exposed some things. Showed where we could really excel and also showed some areas where we need to improve and the support for tech, the support for technology is one of those areas in the elementary schools. This provides potentially two technicians in there. There is a sort of opportunity here to continue to support STEM, which came out again through feedback, through my entry plan and also continues to come up through the board plan. This is, this is a sort of tip your toes in it a little bit. I think you're going to see over time here, a bigger plan for STEM and advances in those, those opportunities for kids. But this really, this really expands some of the computer science courses at the high school and some of the tech ed courses at the high school. The K to 12 robotics, there's an asterisk at that, that is not funded in this year's budget currently as of this day and as of the five-year plan that you're going to see the next agenda item. But I'm looking to see if that, if that could be supported as a club K to 12 through either, either the CDSP or community fund or combinations thereof, just as a, as a an opportunity to kickstart the whole initiative of STEM and getting large groups of kids involved. Instructional coaches, there's an asterisk at that, so that's planned for the following year. This, essentially what that is, that is, that night, this is, this is a reverse of, you may say, well, you just argued on assess facilities. You need an administrator to coach, but that's not really what that top one is. That's not really coaching. This is coaching and here you need really master teachers coaching. This is also an opportunity for our staff to gain leadership position within the district. But essentially, done right, done right, I would have a math and science coach one and a literacy coach and all of the elementary schools. The suggestion would be in this case to put a literacy coach in each of the elementary schools. And then in the following year, put a math and science coach in them. What does the coach do? The coach works directly with the teachers in instructional practices. The cornerstone, I've said before, is a lot of the cornerstone of our district is the curriculum, the solid curriculum that exists, and that's great. But this also supports, supports the teachers' instructional practices in the classroom, not just what the actual curriculum is. Given, given the conundrum of budget, at this point, I have to put it as a year right. The L, L teacher, we discussed last year, at this point, the number of students has, has dropped. So we don't have as many students in the program. That may well come back in the sense of when we do a full analysis of the SRBI that's being taught by our EL instructors. So it's, it's in the year at the moment, but it may come back into play again. So those are some of the things that may make their way to the board in some capacity. Again, I would just say this is an opportunity just to flag some things and to give you just sort of a heads up and over time, if we need to learn more about these things and so on, we can certainly do that. But with that, end there and ask for questions about any of that items.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. Appreciate that. Some exciting things that you spoke to there. I'll open it up for board, board questions or comments. Mrs. McCann.
Alan, are you planning to present these to us again in a more formal way?
I certainly, Jill, I certainly take the lead from the board as to what, what, if, if, if they would like to be presented as, okay, could you just do a wee presentation on open choice? Or a wee presentation on STEM or anything else? I'm certainly happy to come back in a different, different manner. I'm just, as discussions on, so I'm just giving the board just a wee idea of kind of just some things that are on the table at the minute. But I'm happy to do the board's pleasure and how they would like me to frame that.
Okay, specifically, there's a couple on there that, that I would like to understand a little bit more about. Certainly, the assess facilitators as administrators, that program as it was originally conceived, the, the the facilitators had three functions. One was kind of like the instructional coach that you were talking about, sort of a master teacher for other special ed teachers. Another was compliance and another was, you know, sitting in on those PPTs. So this is a change in, in the program. And so while I appreciate that it may be a good idea, it would be helpful to understand the, how that program has ever had, that role has evolved and what you're solving for now.
Sure, it's actually been helpful for me to get some feedback on the history of some of these programs.
Mrs. Ritchie.
Just to follow up on Jill's request, I think what would be helpful for me anyways is maybe a brief narrative on each initiative. And specifically included in that would be what is the budgetary impact and what is the FTE impact? There's a lot here and some of it, I think, on the surface sounds great, but I think for me, I need more information and I would love to see that in a more formal way, if that's what the board.
Any other board questions or comments?
Just to clear, just to clarify, are these definitely going to make the budget? Or I thought, I guess the ones starred aren't, but help me understand, are these definitely going to make next year's budget?
No, not definitely.
Okay.
Not, not definitely. We still have a good couple of weeks to work on things, but some of them will.
Okay, so my request would be any, any of those that come forth now for next year, I shouldn't say now, but in the budget process, that you give us a little more information.
Actually, I'm certainly happy to give you more information on, on all of them, to be honest with you.
Mrs. Stein.
Well, to that end, I, I would love to just voice my support particularly of open choice and the teachers and residents, obviously, there's a larger, broader conversation about diversity inclusion happening on many levels. And sitting in strategic planning, it came up over and over again. And I'm really happy to see us take some proactive steps in addressing that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stein. Mrs. Akman.
So I would say it would be helpful to the board to know prior to our budget books, what is actually in? Because that, that helps us frame our questions over that long Christmas break when we don't, we're not quite in budget season, but it helps us. And, and I don't know that we want to spin our wheels on ones that, that aren't going to be in. So maybe just before we break for Christmas to know a preview of what's in and maybe a brief narrative on it. And then I second what Mrs. Stein is saying. I think open choice and teacher and residents, you know, we've had that conversation. We've, we've done community conversations. We saw a lot of discussion this summer. And so it would be nice to kind of lead the way and, and put some action behind the words that, in the conversations we've had. So it's exciting at least to begin that conversation. Thank you.
Mrs. Parent.
I'm just going to echo what Mrs. Stein and Mrs. Akman said. I think it's, it's really, really exciting that this, these diversity initiatives are in here. And I think that we have a real opportunity to be leaders in our area and showing, you know, how, how Darien can be a leader. So, thank you for that.
So I want to, in conversations with Dr. Adley, I want to thank him. I think feedback from the board has been over the years that I've been on board. We need to get ahead of what we're looking at, what we're investing in, what we're thinking about. And I think that's what he's tried to do here is to start the conversation. So I think that's the first step and I think all the points that were made, if any of this moves forward, it would come to us with an understanding of budget implications, FT implications, and also understanding measurements and metrics around the success of these programs. So, so all good stuff. Thank you. Any other further questions or comments around the update on the budget?
No, just, just I wanted to build on that.
You said no.
No, I, no, I do, what I do.
It's almost 11 o'clock. You said no.
I just want to echo.
Go ahead, Mrs. Ritchie.
I don't know, I've done a little research on open choice and I think I agree with everyone that's made the comment that it is an exciting initiative and I think it is something that I would like to see us prioritize. So, thank you for that, Dr. Adley.
Very exciting.
I'll have to say that, I'll just say that it's encouraging to hear the support for, for that type of initiative around the board. So thank you.
Great. Presentation of five-year budget projections, Dr. Adley and Mr. Rudel.
Sort of gets himself organized there with the presentation. I'll just keep, I'll just keep going a little bit if I may. So this, this process sort of delineates, delineates out the five-year projections. Now, you have more of a history than I do. My understanding is that this is asked for by the Board of Finance and it's also reviewed by the board. And it's used as a sort of guiding sort of document, at least as a discussion platform for people and a plan and document to some degree. So this year, what I've tried to do is build out some of these, build out some of these, like for instance, the coaches, some of these initiatives have built them out in the years a little bit. So just if we can't get some things done, we'll build them into the years now. That doesn't mean to say that, that they're going to definitely happen, but that's the sort of model that this, that you'll see in here. Now, we've put in, we've built in what we would normally build in, some of our fixed causes, fixed costs, the contractual obligations that we have, staff turnover, so the things that you would normally think that we would put in there, fuel costs, health benefits at 8%. So we've sort of put those, all those fixed costs. And I will say, if you were to strip out everything in the first year, if you go to the, if you go, well, when Richard puts it up, you'll see that the first year is 4.54. Getting it under five was difficult because essentially doing nothing, just right now, just like, just, just today, doing nothing on our budget is about 3.8. So you can see the challenge right away to sort of keep it low and also get things done. It's going to be another conundrum year this year. So we're at 4.54 and I will say even to do that, I'm going to have to make it about $250,000 to $500,000 of reductions above and beyond what we've done already. And then the years, you can see how, how it plays out the following years. It goes, it goes from 4.54, 4.57, 3.72, 3 and 3. So that's really the big picture here. The, the first year is, got those things that you just saw in the budget are in this for the first year. The ones that aren't are right in the year. So for instance, a coach is EL teacher, custodian, so on and so forth are right in the years here. So it's a challenge at the moment. Again, we're about 3.8 with no new programs. Looking at right now, 4.54, that's where, that's kind of where we are. And we'll, we'll continue to work at it over the, over the next couple of weeks and months.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. Any board questions or comments at this point? Mrs. Ritchie.
This is really just guidance that we give to the Board of Finance for their, the state of the town. It's not something that, well, I certainly, I certainly don't, I hope that we don't see these, this end number when we get our budget. But I, maybe someone else who's been on the board longer, I feel like in years past, we actually voted on this. Is that not the case?
We've had that conversation.
Okay, I couldn't remember.
We ever.
The board changed their mind. They used to vote on it.
Yeah.
The board changed their mind about whether they vote on it because it was guidance for the Board of Plan Finance, not actionable by us and we weren't necessarily endorsing it.
Right.
Just like our financial plans, they're accurate, where snapshots were, but we no longer vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
There were differences of opinions on it. You're right.
Okay, I just couldn't remember.
Thank you. Any other further questions or comments? Mrs. Parent.
I have a quick question. I read in here that you're using the current high class size limit to determine the number of sections. And I'm curious why you're doing that over the optimal.
Sir, can you just say it again? You said I'm using the current class size section.
The current high class size guideline to determine the number of sections each year. And if we're, if we're aiming for optimal, which optimally we would, why are you not using optimal and why are you using high instead?
Rich, I thought we had the.
Practice historically has been used high, so we just, we are discontinuing the practice.
Okay.
We'll be using the medium in the actual budget.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Mrs. Akman.
For the Board of Finance, it's probably good to stay consistent over time, so they're looking at some numbers as they. So high has been.
So the budget always reflects the high, so I, I'm not quite sure it would be the optimal in the budget book that would come forward.
All right, thank you. Next, first reading and discussion on proposed revisions to Board Policy 5125, Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 and repeal of Board Policy 5810, Student Use of the District's Computer Systems and Internet Safety and Proposed Revised Policy 5810, Student Use of the District's Computer Systems and Internet Safety. Mrs. Zion. And Mrs. Stein.
So we are recommending, the policy committee is recommending that you adopt the revisions to Policy 5125, the students and Section 504. The most important thing that we did there was codify that Shirley Klein, Assistant Superintendent for Special Education, is our Section 504 ADA Coordinator. The rest of the changes are legal, so we've been doing this anyway, but it's very important, of course, for everyone to know who the coordinator is.
And this is a first reading and discussion and we'll come back to the board for a vote. So any questions or comments currently?
No, just that, I'm sorry, one, one of the policies is COVID-related.
That's the second one, yeah, okay.
Right, this, these would be permanent revisions. There's nothing COVID-related. So they wouldn't expire.
Any further discussion, questions? Personnel items.
We're going to do the second, shall we do the second policy?
Okay.
So we're asking you to repeal current Policy 5810 of students' use of private devices. Through some investigation, we believe that somehow the language from Policy 5300, which you just revised, was inadvertently duplicated in, in 5810. It doesn't need to be. It's confusing. There was no easy way to undo what had already been done. This makes, this policy now makes it clear with some COVID language that will expire, that all of the provisions that you adopted in 5300 will apply if the student brings his, his or her own computer to school or uses our software or other programs at home when learning remotely.
Questions or comments?
Marge, can you just clarify? So when we go to pass this, there is language in there that will just automatically expire. We don't have to go through an iterative process.
Correct, and that language is highlighted in yellow.
Thank you.
And now if you do look on our website, you can see that the policies are now up in the separate COVID section so that people can find them easily and we'll just wipe them out. Thank you.
Next.
So we'll vote on these at the next meeting.
So first reading and discussion. Any further comment or discussion?
And if anyone has anything, if they could just send any questions into Marge prior, that would be.
Action items, personnel items, Mrs. Zion.
So that campus monitor is the last of the coded additional campus monitors that the board authorized and the resignation of one of our school psychologists.
Thank you.
We've already filled the position and that'll be on the next PAR.
Thank you. May have a motion to approve the personnel items as detailed in the personal action report dated November 24th, 2020. Mrs. Ritchie motions, Mr. Maroney second. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Onto public comment.
If you would like to speak during public comment, click the participants icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the raise hand option. You will notice a blue hand icon appear in the upper corner of your screen where your face, name or number appears. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you were unmuted for public comment. Once recognized and unmuted, please state your name and address. You will have up to three minutes to comment. And there is no one for comment.
Okay, thank you. Just real quickly before enjoyment, just everyone, I wish on the behalf of the board and. and thank you for staying with us through a long meeting with a lot of good information, but a healthy and safe Thanksgiving holiday to all. Enjoy and be safe. Thank you. I will ask for an adjournment of the meeting. Deb Ritchie, second, Mr. Maroney, all in favor?